All right, good evening and welcome to the March 10, 2022, meeting of the Falmouth Zoning Board Appeals here at Falmouth Town Hall. Calling the meeting to order and ask everyone to please silence their cellphones at this time. I'll introduce the board, starting at my far right. Your far left is Jerry P. Thomas, who was an associate member. To his left is James Morse, who was a full-voting member. To my immediate right is Scott Zalinski, who was the board's vice chair. My name is T.J. Hari. I'm the chair of the board. To my left is Bob Dugan, who is the board's clerk. And to his left is Scott Peterson, who is an associate member. Also with us tonight is Norine Stockman, who is the zoning administrator. And Ashley DeMello is watching at home tonight to be the recording secretary. The zoning board of appeals is charged with applying the zoning bylaws for the town, and we consider requests for special permits, variances, and appeals as provided in the bylaws, which have been approved by town meeting and Attorney General's Office for the Commonwealth. All decisions the board makes are made through the public hearing process. The board's goal is to hear testimony from the applicants, from the public, and also to allow a full and fair discussion of the project prior to rendering a decision. To begin each hearing, the clerk will read the public announcement of the hearing and then present any pertinent information from the files, such as referrals from town departments and summarizing correspondences to the board. The applicant or the applicant's representative will then have 15 minutes to make a presentation, and time may be extended by vote of the board. The board will then question the applicant, and the public will be invited to comment as well. Public comment should only be directed at the project itself. We ask you to please refrain from making any personal or derogatory statements. Public comment can include an opinion in favor or in opposition, or it might just simply be a question about the nature of the project. The chair will limit discussion in the interest of time in the event that comments become repetitive. All members of the public wishing to speak should wait to be recognized by the chair. Come to the podium to the left there. We ask you to please state your name and address for the record. We do limit public comment to two minutes per person, and while you're up behind the podium, we ask you to stay behind the podium, speak into the microphone, and that microphone is for the benefit of people watching at home on FC TV. That microphone does not amplify within this room itself. We will then either close or continue the hearing. When the board is satisfied that enough information has been presented by testimony and in the file to make a decision, by motion and vote of the board, the hearing will be closed. In the alternative, the board may continue a hearing to a future date in time certain. After the hearing is closed, no more testimony may be taken. And as for board discussions and decisions, the board may then further discuss a project among ourselves, make a motion to deny or approve that would be made and voted upon. The opinion will, I'm sorry, the motion will include a summary of key findings and conditions. An affirmative vote of four members, which is a supermajority, is required for approvals of motions on special permits, variances, and appeals. A split vote, such as a three-to-two vote, would be a failure to carry and would result in denial of the project. Under Massachusetts general law, if a special permit is denied, the applicant cannot return to the board for two years unless the project is substantially different. So turning to the agenda for tonight, we do have public comment, followed by three continuations, four new hearings, and we do have a few items on our open meeting agenda list. So up first for tonight is public comment. This public comment period is meant for anything that is not on the agenda. So if you're here to speak on something to do with one of the applications, just wait for the appropriate time this evening. So is anyone out there with anything to say for something that is not on the agenda tonight? All right, seeing none, moving on to our continuations. Up at 6:30, we do have application 57-17M, North Star Place LLC, 123 Brookhill Road in East Falmouth, requesting a modification to comprehensive permit 57-17 to allow modifications to previously approved plans. Voting members on this project are myself, Scott Zalinski, Bob Dugan, and James Morse. And during the last time, Bob Dugan was not with us. He did indicate in an email that he'd be applying for, or watching the meeting and then supplying Mullen Rule affidavit, and he has done so, so he is all set. So with that out of the way.
Mr. Chairman, I just want to remind folks that I had filed a public disclosure because Mr. DeSangro, then doing business as North Star, built my house 15 years ago, and he still lists me as a reference. I think I've filed that a couple of times in regard to Mr. DeSangro and North Star.
Thank you, Jerry. My apologies for missing that, but thank you.
Only I would remember it.
Right. All right.
Hi, good evening. Nick Marioni for the applicant. We had requested a continuation till the second meeting in April because we, due to weather, we haven't been able to get out there and change the sidewalk or move the fence yet. So it was suggested that I might show up anyway to speak with the board.
All right, so you are, you're asking for a continuation to April?
Second meeting in April, which should be all finished by then.
What's the date certain on that? Do we have it?
I don't have it in front of me.
That would be April 21st.
And if we go with a continuation, Norine, do we have a, do we have anything signed for the new date?
All right, so I guess we're looking at April 21st then?
Yeah, did you want to, but he might want to discuss some things before.
Sure. Mr. Marioni, did you want to discuss anything at all regarding the project tonight, or were you just looking for the continuance?
I would love to discuss it. I thought, I thought we had, we'd submitted a plan last time that showed all the proposed changes. We thought that the outstanding issue was the sidewalk and the fence post, the two fence posts that run the abutters property. The board suggested at that point that we continue till we got these things fixed. But if, if the board thought it would be wise, we could approve the plan subject to us getting them fixed, or we just come back to, in the second meeting in April.
So, Mr. Maroni, so the total number of changes were, I know you just mentioned the sidewalk, I know that we discussed previously the bump stops for the cars. I just had to have one question on the bump stops, and it has to do with the building number eight, which is the one near the cul-de-sac that I think is the handicap accessible unit?
Yes.
Is there something else besides bump stops? Because, I mean, it seems that the bump stops don't give enough dimensions in between that somebody could actually get by them if they had a wheelchair or not. I don't know if it's just because of the depiction on the plan?
Well, it was, when it was previously, the first set of plans we had, when the sidewalks were the way they were supposed to be, you did have enough room, because you had the granite curbs on it that elevated.
Yeah, so this just shows, so, so on that building number eight, you may want to look at that to figure out that whatever is placed there. Will stop the cars, but also allow someone to get through with a wheelchair. I don't know if...
I think that they can get between the two bump stops, because that, the driveways on the handicap units were wider.
Yeah, so I'm just going by the depiction that was sent in, and I can't, the picture that was sent in looks like it's really small. Maybe it isn't, so maybe if they update the depiction, they could put just what a dimension is in between, so we'd know there's enough space there.
Are you talking about parallel to the front of the building?
Yeah.
Not coming, Nick, not coming between the bump stops approaching the building? He's talking about parallel to the front of the building, so once they get up behind the bump stops?
No, yeah, I couldn't, according to...
That it's wide enough?
It looks like you couldn't even get by the bump stops with the depiction.
Without a plan, maybe it'd be best just...
Yeah, so you could look at that, but it's building number eight, and it's that, it's that one parking, and you'll see, because it says...
And it might be as simple, Nick, as proposing a, a bollard or something on that corner, just that'll allow that room to get through.
What's the concern, the meter or the spacing between the...
No, that if you had a wheelchair, you can't get by the bump stops.
The ADA requirements from it.
Okay, so...
Since we're adjusting things.
So in that case, maybe a bollard makes more sense, because the bollard gives you enough space in between, but it still stops the cars.
Okay. Now, there's only one handicap unit on that building. The other ones, the other handicap units in building six.
Is in building...
Six B and eight A are the handicap units. Neither of them have wheelchair ramps.
So I, so I would just look at that, too, with the bump stops, and maybe both handicap units, you'd go with a, with a bollard versus just so that if you had to get by it with a wheelchair, if there was a temporary ramp that someone used.
You just want to make sure you fall within the ADA.
Yeah.
With respect to...
Okay.
I understood by reviewing everything about the sidewalk, so the plans at this point are just to remove the sidewalk that encroached and just back onto the property?
There were some other things besides the bump stop versus sidewalk. There was pull carts versus dumpsters.
Pull carts versus dumpsters.
There were some parking spaces that were in different areas than were shown on the original plan. There was one less parking space out front that was shown on the plan, and we added a, the bus shelter wasn't shown on the plan, the flagpole, and...
The aluminum hatch to the pump station, we had already discussed that.
We eliminated a parking space there and the, and the maintenance building.
That was the shed.
Pardon me?
The shed.
The shed, yeah.
So, so are you under the standing, under the understanding, when you said tonight, that, that all the other items were acceptable?
If, if all the other items are acceptable with the board, we'll just submit an as-built plan showing all of those, and when we move the sidewalk and the fence, we'll show on the plan revised as-built.
Okay. So I guess my only comments, and it's just for me, is that regarding the, the pull carts versus the dumpster, the only other issue I see with the pull carts is that the only way you can get them to the back of the buildings is to get them across the lawns, and then they're going to have to be stored somewhere, and there isn't any place for interior storage. So I actually think that a dumpster situation in, in a rental project like this is easier. Also, the abutters that would be located on the Jamie Lane side, even though there's a fence and stuff there, if people are storing their trash cans and stuff with the animals or whatever, that's all going to be stored in back, so that's probably going to be within view. I don't have any issue with the bus shelter. Maintenance building, I personally don't have an issue with it, as long as it's conditioned that the maintenance building is only for use in the actual, this development itself.
Because you don't want, you don't want it left outside with tarps on it, I mean...
No, I mean, that's why, yeah. No, the maintenance building is fine, you would just, I would suggest a condition on it that just says that the maintenance building is for use of this complex only, for anything maintenance related to the complex, because you do have someone that does, you know, other construction projects in town.
How do you regulate that, Nick, with respect to housing gasoline and a, or a maintenance shed? Is that housed with a special locker, or do we have to condition that to make sure there's a flammable locker?
I don't think so.
Be the fire department, was that, excuse me?
We plan to just, we do plan to put the plow in.
Well, the fire department didn't have an opportunity to give us a referral on this, because we're discussing the fact that he is, they're going to use this for lawn mowing equipment and things like that, right?
Yeah.
So I assume that you're going to store gas somewhere.
Well, I imagine the gas that's in the lawn mower anyway would be in, I don't know if we're going to, we could not store others in it.
The phrase "I don't know" leads me to ask the question.
I know.
So, I mean, that may be something you want to consider, small flammable locker inside of it to house gasoline in the vent that it does, just to cover your bases on it.
Yeah, because we will, we will probably have paint there, too.
Pretty inexpensive, and it checks that box off.
Okay. And as far as the pull carts go, we've been operating out there since October 2020, so a year and a half, with people living there, we haven't had any trouble with the pull carts. We've been through two winters with it now.
So what do they do in cases where there's snow?
We get them out there somehow. People get them out there, or they leave them out closest to the street, next to the front?
So that's, and I understand, so that's, that's just my concern on a rental complex, is that, you know, they get them out there somehow, but if a maintenance company hasn't done some kind of pathway to the back of the building, and I know you have insurance, and that's a separate issue, but somebody dragging a pull cart from the fronts to the backs with no storage, and then having to get them back and forth, you know, if we have an ice storm like we've had this year. The other complexes that I've just personally been on usually always go with the dumpsters, because it's more controllable. It's easier for a management company, it's easier for development, and would have to come up to vote like anything else, but me personally, I would be looking for the dumpster versus the pull carts. I just think it's easier. When you come back on the plan again, when you show the dimensions on the bump stops, if you could just also show the dimensions from the bump stops to the, to the main roadway itself, I'm sure that you probably do have enough space, I just can't tell by the plans.
Excuse me, one second. Mr. Chairman, I think in all fairness to the applicant, Bob, we need, we need to finish up that last thought with, he doesn't know what we're asking.
Well, I guess...
It's your opinion.
Yeah, so I guess...
That that's what you want, but I think we need a general consensus on the board.
So I don't know...
Mr. Marioni knows what we want, so he can just put that on the plan.
Yeah, so I don't know if the board is interested in actually voting on a couple of these issues tonight, so that the applicant has an idea.
Well, I mean, we've, we've sent applicants off in the past with a, with a gray area for them to, you know, to decipher on their own. I think we're at the end of this project. We're two years into people living there, and it's been proven that, that this is how they've been doing it through snowstorms. I mean, again, you know how I am about abutters and people that are set in place already. I'm, I'm personally unwilling to unearth or disrupt what they're used to doing already.
So maybe...
We change them, we're all, we're not, we're not changing what the, what the contractor does, we're altering what the people that live there do.
Sure. So let's see if we can reach a consensus among the boards tonight.
So we may want to, like I said, we may want to vote on certain issues, so he knows what the vote is, and he knows what passes and what goes forward.
So we can finalize the plan.
At least you know.
To give you an idea either way.
Sure. Whittles down the issues for the next hearing.
Can we, can we have a general...
We could just vote on each item, so why don't we, why don't we do now, why don't we do the, the request that they, they remove the dumpsters previously deposed and go with pull carts versus the dumpster?
Sure. Voting members on this all set with that?
Sure.
So then I would, I would vote no, but it's a, it's a, again, it's an affordable project, so that would pass if it's a, if it's a three-one.
Yeah, I, they've been doing it for two years. I would have preferred the dumpster, but I don't want to disrupt the argument, so I'd be a yes.
I concur with Mr. Morse's assertion. That leaves you.
Oh, you didn't hear me. I said same, same as James.
Yeah, so that's three, 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 four, one again, so that passes, and the next one would be bus shelter?
So the bus shelter is all set. I think you maybe had asked for some additional landscaping, maybe in that area in the front?
Okay, so...
That was the fence, I believe.
I don't remember that.
We asked to take down a six-foot stockade fence and put in a split rail fence with landscaping in front of it instead of the six-foot fence.
So motion to approve that change with the removal of the six-foot stockade, replacement with a split rail, and the additional landscaping, as was discussed.
I'll second that.
All right, so motion was made by Bob, seconded by Scott. All those in favor?
Aye.
You know what, let's do a formal vote for that first one, too, because we didn't quite do that. Bob, you want to make that motion?
On the, well, you do the one with the pull carts.
I'm sorry, you wouldn't be making that one with the motion.
Yeah, so you do the pull carts.
All right, so I'll make the motion to approve the pull carts.
Versus the dumpster.
Versus the dumpster, as, as discussed.
Mr. Chairman, I'll second your motion.
All right, motion by myself, seconded by Scott. All those in favor?
Aye.
And...
One opposed.
One opposed, okay, so that's three to one. Already took care of the bus shelter. What's next?
Shed.
The maintenance building?
Sure.
So I would make a motion to approve the addition of the 116 maintenance shed and location as shown on the plan, with the condition that that maintenance shed be used only for anything having to do with this specific project.
And if you, and if gasoline storage is in it, provide some kind of flammable locker for that said gasoline.
So we could put on that with the addition of the storage shed for the project, that they also just have an okay with the fire department if they're going to store anything that's flammable?
Yeah, whatever's appropriate by them, right?
Just ask for a referral from fire and the additional conditions that they have.
Yeah, for flammable storage.
So will you make that motion?
Yes, I'll make that motion, so to, yeah, as discussed.
That motion was made by Bob, seconded by Scott. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We had the, the flagpole?
Curb stops.
Yeah, the, so on the curb stops, I know we're going to end up continuing, there was the hearing, I need more information on the plan.
They're going to be represented on the plan you bring back anyway, right? We can condition...
Say that again?
They're going to be represented on the plan.
They are.
Which I would...
But with the addition of what we're going to do with the ADA stuff.
With bollards in place of, in place of curb stops at the two handicap units.
So they, they were looking for, I know it continues for the next hearing, so the only issue I have with the curb stops is that we don't have any dimensions on the plans, and I understand, he now understands that he's going to look at the two handicap accessible units to do maybe a bollard, but we need some kind of a measurements on them so that we knew that the curb stops we're putting in aren't making the driveways too short, so that you have anything in the street, and also we need to see any dimensions in between the two, just to make this more space. So that's something we may want to continue, have them do the changes that they think they can do with the, with the dimensions and the, and the bollards, and then we could actually vote that at the next.
I think that's fair.
Follow that?
I think so.
If you don't, ask.
So...
I, I think so. I think, so conceptually, the, you're okay with the curb stops and the bollards?
We're okay conceptually with the curb stops and then bollards at the handicap units?
So long as...
Just depicted on the plan and actually shows some kind of measurements, the size of the curb stops, the distances.
ADA, make sure that they conform to ADA standards.
Yeah.
And be creative, but they have to conform to ADA, or they become a safety hazard.
Okay, so does that leave the two, last two outstanding issues, the curb stops, which we talked about, and then the sidewalk being rearranged?
So there's the sidewalk being arranged, and we would have to look at that next time, because they have to show the plan with it.
Correct.
All right, so if you want to discuss the sidewalk really quick, there is a chance you could actually take a vote on the sidewalk, conditioning it that the sidewalk that's shown as encroaching on the current plan be removed onto this site, that the encroaching land be replaced with previous condition.
That's one that's on someone else's property?
And that notice, and notice still be, Nick, did they ever send a notice to the other property at all, or just try to reach them by phone?
Now, we tried to reach them, they, they sold the property, and we haven't been able to reach the people, and then we just decided to move it anyway. But the, the other thing is, you're still holding $20,000, so the release of the $20,000 condition that I was doing, moving the sidewalk and the fence, submitting an as...
Asphalt plants and all of that to come back up, because nobody wants to lay asphalt in this weather.
Right.
I can get behind that.
All right.
So the only thing I would ask the, I guess the attorneys on the board, is that do we need to put something in there just so that there was actually, just some kind of a notification that was actually mailed to the property owner, just so they know what...
I, I believe at this point, it's on them right now. I mean, if the property owner has an issue with it after the fact, I mean, that's, that becomes something between, you don't even know who owns the new property.
Why would they have an issue with us taking the sidewalk off the property?
They moved it to their own property.
Yeah, we restored the landscape, you know, there.
It's either our decision to let it, let it be moved.
Yeah, I've just never seen, I've just...
Contradiction to the original plan.
I've just never seen a case where you've got an encroachment that occurred, and no one has sent any kind of a notice to somebody versus just saying, we're trying to move it by phone.
But hasn't it been, but hasn't it been, haven't they fixed the encroachment?
No.
Not yet.
They will.
But as part of this process, they, they're agreeing to do that.
Now, with your private attorney, you know, someone would sue them if they're upset.
I, I mean, I can't purport that that would happen.
No.
That's, that's...
Possibly.
What I'm saying, what we have, we have to do, if they agree to eliminate the encroachment, then I don't think we, we can...
So Norine, do we have to put a date, do we have to put a date certain in, or the...
If you prefer not to have them come back, I think it's certainly reasonable to request that it be completed by a certain date.
The last thing you want them to do is disrupt it right at this moment with the weather, the way it is.
No, no, I completely understand that, but you also need a date in.
The bump stop anyway, right, so...
So we could wait on that till they come back with a bump stop?
Yeah.
And write up what, whatever the language would be? Okay.
Once it gets warm, you'll be able to match, you'll be able to match joints and everything else and not create more problems for yourself if we wait till it gets, or if you wait till it gets warmer.
And the only other thing, and I don't even think, this might be a mistake in my part, was there something about a flagpole?
There's a flagpole up front, near the bus stop.
Was there anything about some move of a flagpole? I, I just, I don't know if that was actually on there or not.
Put a flagpole in, it's not on the plan.
Oh, so that's...
Showed it on that...
But it is now.
New plan.
So that's easy, so we can just do a motion to accept the flagpole that's been placed on the plan?
What's on it, an American flag?
Yeah.
I vote yes.
I'll make that motion.
And then miscellaneous asphalt parking areas that weren't as shown in the original plan.
All right.
So vote on the flagpole.
All right, James, you were making that motion?
I am.
So, so long as there's an American flag there?
I'll second it.
All right, seconded by Scott. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all right. All right, so that leaves us with the curb stop and the sidewalk?
Yeah, and so what we would do is at the next meeting, once we continue, they'd come back to show us the dimensions, the changes on the curb stock and the sidewalk, and on the sidewalk, they could actually show where it's going to be moved to, and then we'll have language by then on how to write up the dates on the sidewalk.
Sounds good to me.
So Norine, what was the continuation date requested?
For 21.
Nick, please come, if anything changes, please come back to us before somebody makes a decision to do something.
Yeah, I mean, everything's done except for those two things.
Please.
So then I make a motion to continue to April, was it 21st?
I'll second it.
21st.
21st, did you say?
21st.
Motion to continue April 21st, made by Bob, seconded by Scott. All those in favor?
Aye.
Going aside of that date?
More good, we'll send for a new one.
All right, up next, we have application 16-21R. Court ordered remand, Noonan, 183 Surf Drive in Falmouth, requesting a special permit to raise and rebuild the nonconforming dwelling, increasing law coverage by structures.
Just give me one second.
Yep. I think where we left off last time, we didn't, we did not open this hearing, so I don't think anything was read in.
Okay, let's see.
Who you appointing?
I'll, I'll get there. Attorney Clower, is that my recollection correct?
That is correct. I'm actually, I'm not sure what, what needs to be read in based on the wording of the remand, because...
No, and it's a remand order, so...
Nothing at all? I figured there was at least something.
So why don't I just, what should I do, Norine, just read in the remand?
I think you can just read in the remand order.
It's my first remand, so I don't really know either.
I get it at home all the time.
It's a demand, not a...
Yeah, why don't I just, so why don't I just read in that this is, because this is the current application number, I'm at 16 dash, 16 dash 21. I'm just going to open it as a remand, so application 16-21R, court ordered remand, Joseph and Mary Noonan, 12 Pleasant, Pheasant Hill Road, Norfolk, Mass., apply to the zoning board of appeals for special permit pursuant to sections 240-13C and 240-69E of the Code of Falmouth to raise and rebuild the nonconforming dwelling, increasing law coverage by structures on subject property known as 183 Surf Drive, Falmouth, Mass. I'm going to review the referrals, just because these were from 2021. So again, these are the previous referrals. Everything in the file seems to have stayed the same, March 29, 2020, actually, March 26, 2021. This is from Amy Lowell. She stated, it looks like they are increasing to four bedrooms, but a four bedrooms is allowed under the flow-neutral bylaws, so no flow-neutral bylaw hearing is required. Suggest the contractor or owner's representative will need to apply to the wastewater division for sewer connection modification permit before beginning any work, and also a contact person to contact before demolishing the house. Wastewater will want to witness the cut and cap of sewer line to prevent demolition debris from entering the sewer. And again, this is from February 23, February 23, 2021, actually, March... And again, this is from February 23rd, February 23rd, 2021, actually, March, March 16th, 2021. Application was reviewed for impacts to public rights of way and public utilities. Seagull Lane is a private right of way in this area. Any connections or alterations to public utilities would require permission from the appropriate town department. The project must not direct any stormwater runoff to public property butters or public rights of way. A leaching trench is proposed for the roof area. As mentioned in our review in 2020, the address for this home must be changed to Seagull Lane address. Engineering will not sign off on the building permit until that change has been made. We recommend the following condition be included in any approval, which is subsection 991, a fixing of legible numbers required and time limit for compliance. And upon completion of this construction, the applicant shall post the address for this residence per that subsection. Where the project is subject to Conservation Commission jurisdiction and is not on a public road or adjacent to a town property, they defer to Conservation Commission for erosion and sediment controls. From Concom. An amended order of conditions was issued on March 3rd, 2021, according to the plan titled Site Plan, a proposed house prepared for Marion Joseph Noonan, 183 Surf Drive, Falmouth, with a final revision date of 12/3/2020. The original order of conditions and amended order of conditions are attached as well as a plan of reference. The applicant should submit a copy of the plan submitted to the ZBA with any final revision date, with the final revision date of 2121, showing the details of the proposed deck and platform dimensions to the Conservation Department for our records. There is a plan attached. There's an amended order of conditions. That order expires on March 4th, 2023. There's also a copy in the file of the original order of conditions. Fire Department, Fire Department has no issues, the project is drawn. Again, that's February 25th, 2021. And from assessing, no comment, that's from February 24th, 2021. Planning Department, no comment, 20, February 24th, 2021. Scott McGann from 22321, property is on public sewer, I refer to wastewater division, that was already read in. Norrie, do you have, Mr. Kirk's in the one here?
He's sitting here with him. I'm not sure where.
Let's see if you can take a shot at it.
What are we looking for?
There was a submittal that was sent in by Attorney Kirk. It was sent to us and I just didn't see it in the file. I can try to find it in the online.
The one that just came in or?
Yeah, the one that we had, is that it?
Oh, this, no, this just came in, it was on the current.
Did I see that?
Came in Tuesday, I believe.
Yes, it's the one that came in this week. I just don't have the date of it. Please don't.
All right, so I'm going to read this one in. So this was a submittal that was sent to the board members, I just currently don't see in the file and I can stamp this as a copy for the file. Falmouth zoning board of appeals, John Mary Noonan, Surf Drive, application 16 dash 21. This is a memorandum of Gloria Arceis in opposition to Noonan, application submitted after remand. It starts out, the Noonan lot has been illegal and noncompliant with zoning since creation in 1951. In 1947, the town of Falmouth required a minimum frontage of 50 feet for newly created residential lot. He attached in exhibit two, a subdivision plan submitted by Lawrence C. Hill, showing 11 single-family residential lots on April 13th, 1951, in book 98, page 71. Also shows a parcel of land adjacent to but not part of the subdivision, which parcel was owned by Joseph E. Marion. See attached exhibit number two. Three, the Marion parcel shared a 42-foot-long common boundary with the subdivision way and had approximately 240 feet of frontage on Surf Drive, see attached exhibit two. Four, Marion subsequently obtained from Hill and easement of passage over the existing way for the benefit of the land. Five, a subdivision plan of Joseph E. Marion dated April 28th, 1951, and recorded on June 23rd, 1952, at the Bonzville County Registry of Deeds. In book 104, page 121, divided the Marion parcel into four lots, A, B, C, and D, see attached exhibit three. Six, at the time of the recording of the subdivision plan, the minimum area required in the district was 7,500 square feet, and each of the four lots contained in excess of 7,500 square feet. Seven, at the time of recording of Marion subdivision in June of 1952, the minimum frontage requirement was 50 feet. Lots A and B each had in excess of 50 feet of frontage on Surf Drive. Nine, if the irregular-shaped area at the end of the way is actually part of the approved subdivision way, Lot C had slightly in excess of 50 feet of frontage on the way. Ten, even if the irregular-shaped parcel was part of the way, Lot D had only 30 feet of frontage on that way, less than the minimum frontage required at the time. Eleven, from the very outset, Lot D had never been a lawful or legal lot nor lawfully nonconforming lot for purposes of zoning, has been an illegal, noncompliant lot with respect to frontage. Twelve, Massachusetts case law is quite clear that a planning board's endorsement or approval of plan confers no zoning rights or status as a building lot to lots shown in that plan where that does not comply or conform with zoning requirements when it is approved or endorsed by the planning board. The planning board endorsement under general laws, chapter 41, section 81P, gave the lot no standing under the zoning bylaw. And he quotes Alley versus Building Inspector of Dan versus 354, Mass., six from 1968. Thirteen, in the case of Arigo versus Planning Board of Franklin, 12, Mass., appellate court 802, from 1981, the court discussed the relationship between the planning board's ability to approve a plan showing a lot whose frontage did not comply with requirements of zoning bylaw and the separate and independent requirement that an owner who attained planning board approval must also obtain a variance of the frontage requirement from the zoning board of appeals in order to have a lawful building lot. In quotations, in keeping with that view, section 81R is to be read as giving the planning board the power to waive strict compliance with the frontage requirements of section 81L, whether that be frontage specific in the zoning bylaw or the 20-foot minimum applicable where zoning bylaw is silent on the subject, does not follow that the planning board is authorized under that interpretation to grant a variance. The cases are legion with recognized that a section 81P endorsement of a plan, approval not required, gives a lot shown in that plan no standing under the zoning bylaw, see Smalley versus Planning Board of Harwich. Ten, Mass. Appeal Court 599, comma 603, 1980, and cases cited. We think that the same principles should apply to plans bearing an endorsement of the approval under section 81U. There is no sound reason why the approval of a plan under the subdivision control law, which may be based on nothing more than a substantial neglect by a planning board who attend to its duties on time, should preclude a building inspector or board of appeals for performing their statutory duties, requiring adherence to the town zoning bylaw, including any provision specifying minimum frontage as a condition of building ability. An approval under the subdivision control law has entirely different significance, entitling the approved plan to recordation and thus in turn affecting marketability of the lots on the plan. In short, then persons in possession of the mercers seeking to make two building lots from a parcel lacking adequate frontage which require to obtain two independent approvals, one from the planning board which may in its discretion waive for the frontage requirements under certain criteria for waiver set out in general laws, chapter 41, section 81R, and one from the board of appeals, which may vary the frontage requirement only under the highly restrictive criteria of general laws, chapter 40A, section 10. The approvals serve different purposes, one to give marketability to the lots through recordation, the other to enable the lots to be built upon. The action of neither board should, in our view, bind the other, particularly as their actions are based on different statutory criteria. Fourteen, it is clear that the planning board's approval of the Marion subdivision plan did not make Lot D a lawful building lot under zoning. The Noonan lot was rendered legal and noncompliant with regard to area in 1963. Fifteen, on October 16th, 1963, there was a recorded at the Bonzville County Registry of Deeds at book 180, page 35, a plan, the Raleigh Plan, endorsed by the Falmouth Planning Board as approval not required, see attached exhibit four. Sixteen, the Raleigh Plan shows there was a single-family residence located on each of the four lots previously designated as lots A, Lot B, Lot C, Lot D on exhibit three. Seventeen, with the endorsement and recording of the 1963 Raleigh Plan, the shape and area of each of the four lots shown on exhibit three has been changed, with the result that the area of former Lot A has been increased.
Well, I don't mean to interrupt, but that's, that's a 37-page opposition, isn't it?
No, it ends, the rest is just exhibits, isn't it?
We, I mean, we can.
Nine pages or 10. Or 11 pages of writing.
All due respect to Attorney Kirk's opposition, we can.
It's however you want to handle it.
Right, we can, we can note it for the record.
All right, so then we'll move forward.
All right. Anything else?
For the record, I have hen scratching on that, maybe tomorrow you can substitute a clean one. I was advised by attorneys years ago, don't put anything on anything. It can be used against you.
Yeah.
Anything else to be read in, Bob?
No, but I won't stay up at night, in that way you can switch it up tomorrow.
Fantastic. All right, and Attorney Clower, if I remember correctly, part of the reason why it was continued was, well, obviously, the language of the remand did state that it instructed us to have the full complement of voting members, so I'll be appointing Scott as a member on this, and that way you have five.
Wonderful, thank you.
All right.
Terry, there was a Boston Ward boss in the 1920s, Martin Lamasny, Lamasny Way next to the garden. He had a famous saying, he said, "Never, never write when you can speak, never speak when you can nod, never nod when you can wink." And I'm convinced truer words have never been spoken, but that's not necessarily relevant to this application. For the record, my name is Kevin Clower, I'm attorney here in Falmouth, and I'm here tonight representing the applicants, Joseph and Mary Noonan, owners of 183 Surf Drive. I'm joined tonight by Mrs. Noonan, as well as her daughter Katie and son-in-law, Ryan. We're also joined tonight by Greg Sarunian from ResCom Architecture. I think Mr. Harry and Mr. Dugan did a great job reviewing the materials, but I think it's probably helpful for me to provide a brief recap of how we got to where we are tonight. The Noonans submitted an application with this board in 2020. The first hearing was actually the first Zoom hearing that we ever held, right when COVID hit. That application was eventually withdrawn without prejudice in order, so that the applicants could consider alterations to their design. They spent a number of months doing that and a new application was submitted last year with a number of changes made to the application and the proposed residence. There was an issue with the voting members at the time. The vote failed three to two and, which is not a super majority, and that decision, due to the appointment of the voting members, was appealed by the Noonans to Superior Court. Following a joint motion for remand filed by both the town and the Noonans, the court did order that the Noonans be granted a new public hearing based on the existing filings for application number 16 dash 21, which is bringing us here this evening. Given the passage of over, oh, just about a year, I think it's helpful to review the application again and the materials that were already submitted last year. The Noonans are here tonight seeking permission to raise and rebuild the existing single-family dwelling located at 183 Surf Drive. This is located between Surf Drive and Seagull Lane. It's in a residential C zoning district and it's in a VE 15 flood zone. They purchased this property in 1994 and have been seasonal residents and taxpayers since that time. They're now looking to make improvements to the property in order to make it their full-time residence. Given the location in the V-zone and the scope of the, of any renovation that would be necessary for this project, it triggers a necessity of flood zone compliance. They really have no choice here but to raise and rebuild the existing structure. Pursuant to building code and FEMA regulations, they are required to elevate the structure so that all mechanicals in the first floor are located at least two feet above the flood zone elevation, which would be elevation 17, about 12 feet above ground. The existing house is a one-story dwelling, footprints just shy of 1,300 square feet, and the lot's 7,603 square feet. It is presently nonconforming, it's nonconforming to front yard setback being 21.2 feet where 25 is required, as well as nonconforming to the three-foot contour of the river, it's nine feet where 50 is required. The proposed dwelling has a slightly expanded footprint, but a larger living area to reflect that this being a primary residence. The nonconforming front yard setback would be eliminated, it's improved from 21 to 28 feet. The three-foot contour setback is slightly improved, nine feet to 10. The proposed lot coverage by structure of the, of the new building would be 21.8%. Since it is in that VE 15 flood zone, the elevation of the joists supporting the first floor would be at elevation 17, which is 12 feet above the natural grade. Due to the existing nonconformities, this does require a special permit under 24010.2A4, which is previously 243C, and section 24011.3A4, previously 24069E. 24010.2A4 allows for alterations to nonconforming structures, provided that the board finds it's not substantially more detrimental than existing. They're asked to consider the standards of what was 240216, and whether or not the alteration creates any new dimensional nonconformities, impairs views and vistas, and conforms to the average dimensions in the neighborhood. 24011.3A4 allows for lot coverage by structure above 20%. In that instance, the boards asked to consider the size and height of the structure in relation to the structures in the neighborhood, the effect of shadow on adjacent properties, the impacts on views and vistas from public ways, and the effect of nitrogen coastal abeyments. Here, as I've noted, the nonconforming front yard setback is eliminated, the three-foot contour setback is improved, the lot coverage by structure would be 21.8, but that's allowable by special permit. There's no new nonconformities created. In addition, there'd be over 1,500 square feet of mitigation plantings done throughout the property, which you can see on, on the attached plan, which will improve the property both aesthetically and functionally, adding protection along the river. The proposed structure is not substantially more detrimental than what exists. It is in compliance with the flood zone, we're going to have improved plantings, eliminations and improvements in nonconformities. While it is a larger structure than what exists, much of this size is required by necessity of elevation. It's in line with many of the surrounding properties, 199 Surf Drive, 189 Surf Drive, 181 Surf Drive have all recently elevated their dwellings in a similar manner. The owner of 185 Surf Drive, the Steppians, submitted a letter of support, they're the persons perhaps most affected by this. In fact, there are eight letters of support submitted from media and butters and owners along Seagull Drive and Surf Drive. As to the effect on views and vistas, this will be visible, but it will not negatively impact the view from the public way, it's going to be very similar in size and design to many of the closest properties. There's no effective nitrogen, it's connected to the town sewer. And we did submit a lot comparison worksheet looking at the surrounding properties, and it actually showed that of those properties, there's nine with larger footprints and eight with larger gross floor areas. I did receive a copy of the information, it was filed by Attorney Kirk, alleges that this lot lacks legal frontage along the way, it's a distraction, it's, it's not really a consideration. We have a pre-existing nonconforming structure, much older than 10 years, built in 1952, it's entitled to protection under both Massachusetts general laws and our zoning bylaw. While it's irrelevant, I think it's also incorrect. This lot was created pursuant to a 1951 subdivision plan. The subdivision plans are viewed and approved astro-zoning. However, in 1952, the town changed the minimum lot size, they increased it to 10,000 square feet. And that revised bylaw states that all lots duly recorded prior to the date of approval by the attorney general, which have an area of 7,500 square feet or more, may be used without the necessity of applying to the board of appeals. There's no mention there of any minimum frontage. 183 Surf Drive was built in 1952. Putting that issue aside, the bylaw asks, will this proposal have adverse effects compared to the beneficial effects? This is not relative to the effects on one single neighborhood, it will still have expansive, sweeping views of vineyard sound, rather to the area as a whole. Again, I think it's worth noting that the neighborhood overwhelmingly supports this project. Here, I, I also think it's important to note that just recently, I think in December, this board approved a very similar project, just about 200 yards away at 48 Bywater Court, with a larger structure, it was a larger footprint, larger gross floor area. It was substantially, you know, but, but the idea was still the same, they were tearing down the house in order to come into compliance with the flood zone standards. And that was, like I said, probably not even 200 yards away. zone standards, and that was, like I said, probably not even two hundred yards away. In this instance, we have a substantial improvement to the property, we have compliance with the flood zone regulations, we have elimination of existing nonconformities, we have no adverse effect, and a number of beneficial effects. I also think it's important to look at the changes the applicants have made since their initial withdrawal on application. To address the board's concerns and the concerns of the abutter, they've set the house back further from the abutters, uh, property line, an additional seven feet, they went from sixteen feet to twenty-three feet, the setback contour, uh, the three-foot contour improved, the front yard step setback, although being eliminated in that instance, was improved as well, went from twenty-six feet to twenty-eight feet. The building height was reduced, the mass of the structure was reduced, the gross floor area reduced approximately seven hundred square feet, it went from three thousand five hundred and twenty-eight down to two thousand eight hundred and eighty. The lot coverage by structure was reduced, they went from twenty-three point two, was what they originally proposed, down to twenty-one point eight. In addition, it provided the board with every, every piece of information that's been asked for. They've given footprint comparison plans of previously proposed and currently proposed dwellings, they've given ridge height comparisons, they've given solar studies. If this is approved, it achieves a fantastic end result. It's a substantial improvement to the property, again, is compliant to the flood zone standards, there's elimination of existing nonconformities, there's improvement to existing nonconformities, there's substantial mitigation plantings, it's a more useful home to be owned. Based on the information I've reviewed, I think it is clear that the proposed revised residence is not substantially more detrimental than what exists. It meets the standards of two forty eleven, uh, ten point two eight four, two forty eleven point three A four, in Section two forty twelve point one E one, which is previously two forty-two sixteen. The applicants have made many changes and concessions to address the board's concerns, as well as those of Ms. Arkeys. And they've arrived at a design that is useful and appropriate for the neighborhood, and I think they've done so in a responsible and efficient, thoughtful manner. For these reasons and for these considerations, I would ask that this board grant a special permit. I'd be happy to address any, any questions or concerns that you might have.
Alright, thank you, Attorney Clower. Turn it to board questions. Scott, anything?
Uh, no, I, I hate to parrot, you know, everything that you just pointed out, but it was nice to see that, uh, we had some square footage reduction in, in the house itself, the setbacks were improved, um, I, I think that the applicant really did, going back into the file here, really did a, a nice job in, in moving forward with a lot of these items that might've, uh, you know, impaired some of the abutters, and to have seven or eight folks speaking, um, in favor, I, I think that he did a nice job in the review. I'm all set.
Alright, thank you, Scott. Bob?
Uh, Kevin, what was the, um, what was the actual building height reduction?
Uh, came down from thirty-five to thirty-four feet, six inch, five inches, six inches?
So about five or six inches was the reduction?
Seven or eight inches, I think it was around seven inches, about half foot.
I only bring that up 'cause I was on both hearings, and on the, I know that the original hearing that we had before the second one, um, one of the issues I had particularly was regarding the height of the structure, um, and that was one of the issues I had with the second hearing still, that the, uh, a reduction of six to seven inches, is it really even visually effective?
Well, they did reduce a lot of massing, I think is also important, 'cause it's not, it's not a box, you know?
You have the, the comparison that you did of the three-D modeling of the comparison of this house up with the others?
So, we did a comparison of, uh, existing and proposed building without the piers, 'cause I think it's important to note that this house isn't that much bigger without the requirement for elevation, with the piers as well.
It, it was the one that you had that, and it was at the last hearing, was, it showed the buildings in front along with the buildings next to it?
So, they looked at it from a number of directions, uh, this is one eighty-three Surf Drive, one eighty-five Surf Drive, uh, what's one ninety-one Surf Drive?
Yes, I think it's the one that showed it behind one eighty-one.
Is that the one where he superimposed the old and the new and the revised?
That was a different application.
Yeah, it was, and I'm trying to remember, but it was a comparison you did for the last meeting, 'cause it was something I asked for, and that was one of the issues that-
So, this is-
I had with Vulcan, and it actually, it even looked bigger than one eighty-one, which is directly in front of it on Surf Drive itself.
Yeah, I mean, I think, I think that's, I think this is what we-
One eighty-one, right?
Yeah, is it this one in the bottom right-hand corner?
Yeah, I think it was a different swing angle, but it was the same idea, that the one, the one that's directly in front of it, if you looked at it even from this house, was a smaller, it seemed like a smaller massing in, versus the one that was being built behind it. When you were kinda comparing things in the area, the, the other question I had was regarding the access in and out, and you'll have to remind me how, how that ended last time, but, um, I revisited the property again a couple times for this application, just to, you know, remind what was gone before. And I had the same issues, um, on the entrance in and out as I did with the first one, I, I couldn't get back out of the property without backing into the yard next door, to the same point that I, you almost have to, there's people in the yard next door, you almost have to have somebody move to make the angles without-
So, I think Mr. Steppian, uh, who was the next door neighbor, actually spoke to that at, at the hearing, uh, via Zoom, uh, and as did Mr. Noonan-
He did, and I think he said you could turn around, but he didn't say if, I mean, when I was going in and out, you, I, I tried to stay on the dirt, I tried to stay on the gravel, which I assume is part of the private of the entrance, um, I've got a forerunner, I, I just, I could not get out without-
So, I think it's worth pointing out that what we're doing here is actually gonna, anything we do is gonna improve what's there right now. So, if you look at, we have the site plan showing the outline of the existing, outline of the proposed, um, this area here is gonna have car storage space, you know?
But what's the, but the, the house right now is, is how many bedrooms?
It's, it's three, and it's going to four.
So, so, so you are, but you, you know you're gonna increase the usage with the fourth bedroom, you're allowed a fourth bedroom automatically, but you're gonna have to have more-
But I still think that anything we do is gonna be improving the, the usage and facility of cars on that site, 'cause you're providing store, car, parking space for two cars within the building or under the building, as well as, you're increasing the size of the existing driveway, because the cars, the house is moving further back from the road, increasing the front yard setback, it's moving further south away from Ms. Arkeys to the north. So, anything we're doing here, I think is gonna be an improvement to the, the parking and, and travel along that site.
That's all I have right now.
Alright, thank you, Bob. Scott?
Yeah, I have a couple. Uh, Attorney Clower, can you explain to me how the improvements that you've just described in any way lessen the liability of coming in that spot, going onto someone else's driveway, in and out? That's, that's the concern that I had, the last, one of the concerns I had was, in order to enter that property, you had to get onto somebody else's property and back out onto somebody else's property. You just described the fact that this will help. Tell me how that happens at the threshold of that driveway?
So, I think that there's ample room here for a car to back up and turn around, pull out. I think that there's ways that there's more use of that space as the house is moving further back, further south, and, uh, and further away from the road, improving that setback, so you have more room to maneuver. I think that, right now, when someone pulls off, they pull off here, and there's no garage, there's no storage, it's, they're pulling in basically right in front of the house, there's no room to move the cars. What we're doing is going to improve the location of the cars on the site and improve the-
I understand, I, I understand onsite, I'm saying getting on the site and getting off the site.
Sure, so, I mean, if you were pulling in here, you'd come down Seagull Lane and pull into this property, that's not going across someone else's property. And likewise, if you're coming out, if you turned around within the site and drove out, you would do so without going onto someone's property.
Alright, um, I don't know if you remember, we had some, uh, some discussion in detail about, uh, the fact that the, uh, the foundation was gonna be poured underwater, it was below the waterline-
There was some conversation with Tim.
Maybe, maybe he'll be, I wanna, I wanna touch on that a little more.
I can speak to that.
Yeah, how do you protect, if you, uh, is this gonna be peered or, or screwed?
Greg Sarounian, ResCom Architecture, the architects. So, when we went to Conservation, this was a big deal with them, um, we actually had a geotech engineer come down, we actually dug test pits to see what we had for soil. Based upon that, Homosomograph actually believe, I don't have a copy of the site plan, but I believe they showed the dewatering operation on their site plan, and we're also going to dig these piers individually, and actually backfill them. Um, in a lot of cases, you'll, you'll, they like to excavate the entire air, area, put in the strip footings, we're not gonna do that, we're gonna do each strip footing individually, place it, backfill it, and then start the next one.
When you dewater that, and you pour, and are you, are you going to, are you squeeging, are you squeeging, um, concrete in the pilasters and forcing water out? How are you dewatering?
They'll pump it into, they have a sand, uh, filter system.
On the property?
On the property.
So then it's gonna go back down on the property and then out?
Yeah, and that was approved by Conservation.
Okay. Uh, my other question is, who owns the maintenance of the seawall? Who owns the seawall on that piece of property, and who owns the maintenance of it?
Presumably, the Noonans would.
Presu-, I, I wanna know-
Yeah, I-
Succinctly, who owns it?
Well, if it's on, if, if it's on the Noonans' property, it would be their, their , their burden. Mrs. Noonan's indicating that it is.
And there are no indications to buttress that wall with respect to the excavation that's gonna go on, 'cause you're gonna have a little bit more loading on that house, that house is quite a bit heavier with-
Yeah, so again, if you looked at, if you look at how we did the structure, again, we took all this-
I, I have.
-consideration. Um, the piers on the backside, I'm not sure we have that, we did show it to Conservation, I don't think it shows on this, but we did, um, the way we had done the pads, we did it in a manner to get most of the load away from the wall, so it's, it's less load closer to the wall.
And what's the groundwater level at excavation, at high, high, high groundwater level?
I don't remember that info, I don't know.
From mean grade.
Shows. I'm gonna have that with me.
It may be in the Concom.
Yeah.
Mr. Kirk's-
Alright, that's all I have for now, Mr. Kirk.
Alright, thank you, Scott.
Thank you, sir.
James?
Updated Title V, subject.
It's, it's sewer.
Sewer, thank you, that's the one thing I couldn't find, review the file.
Alright, Sherry?
Uh, I'm not voting member, one of the things, to me it comes down to, is, uh, the accuracy of your statement, it's buildable lot, the accuracy of Attorney Kirk's statement, that it's not buildable, for all the reasons he cited. So, I mean, I don't know, it's up to the board if we go back to our own counsel, uh, we try to interpret that. You didn't give us anything in writing tonight, did you?
No, I didn't, uh, 'cause I've addressed it, I've addressed the same point a few times at different hearings now.
Okay, I met him, Mr., I'm sorry.
Um, you know, let's, let's play out Attorney Kirk's theory for a minute, right? So, the idea is that it's not a buildable lot, um, which I think it clearly is, 'cause there's been a house there for seventy years, um, but let's play it out. So, what's the recourse? Is the town gonna make them tear down the house, the town won't allow them to improve the house? It just doesn't, it doesn't make any sense. If, if the idea that it's not, not a buildable lot, so where, where do we go? I mean, there's a house on the lot, as it exists today, there's been a house there for seventy years, so, I, I don't-
Isn't it protected by precondition, uh, pre-existing nonconformities?
It's existed for well over ten years, yep, and so, and Attorney Kirk addresses that in his letter, and I don't wanna, I don't wanna put words in his mouth, but he addresses that in his letter, and he says that the lot, the structure might be protected, but the lot isn't, I don't know how that would work, because what, what is the town gonna do? Say, you can't have a house there, or you can't make any improvements to this house ever? It just doesn't make any logical sense.
That was, I think, what triggered my, and maybe when Attorney Kirk comes up here, you can, if the rest of the board's happy, at least the voting members.
Well, I, this is the discussion period, right?
Right.
Well, Mr. Kirk hasn't spoken, has he?
No, but we're, it's, it's just board question-
We're not in discussion yet, Henry.
Just board questions at this point.
Oh, okay, okay, that's true.
Anything else, Sherry?
Uh, no, thank you.
Alright. Attorney Clower, it was just stated that the property's on sewer, but within that sewer area, are they allowed up to-
Four.
Four beds by right?
Yeah, and, and Ms. Lowell's referral reflected that as well.
Alright. Alright, that does it for me. Alright, so public comment, any questions, comments, or concerns regarding this project? Attorney Kirk?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Ed Kirk, um, an attorney with an office in Osterville, and I'm here representing Gloria Arkis, who is the immediate abutter behind, uh, to the north of the Noonan House. Uh, I, I've said this before, this, these cases can be difficult cases, uh, and we have conflicting, serious conflicting interests, uh, in, in property rights and property values, and I think I have to acknowledge the culprit is probably the floodplain, uh, but we have to deal with what's, what is, uh, and then review the standards of the bylaw and the facts, uh, as they're presented. Uh, let me just say a little bit about the two houses. My client is in her eighties, uh, she's lived in her house for about fifty years, uh, if you've been to the site, or if you've even seen the photographs, a little part of my latest memorandum, um, the view that she has is the essential element of, of the house, it's just an ordinary house by most standards, but it has that panoramic view of vineyard sound, and that's the essential feature of how the house is laid out. The living quarters are, I should say, the living room and the kitchen are on the second floor, and sliders are glass floor to ceiling, to take advantage of that beautiful view. Uh, and I, I would say that the, the view itself is probably, uh, the value of the property, whatever it's worth, I think probably eighty percent of whatever the value is, if not, not more. So, that's a very important aspect for her enjoyment of that property, every day that she's there, sunlight coming in and, and, and the view. Right in front of her is the Noonan House. Now, the Noonan House, as you've seen, is a very modest house as well, it sits on a slab, I think it's sixteen feet in height, uh, and, uh, to get to the point, I don't think, despite the many deficiencies in the lot under zoning, uh, the fact that I believe it's not a buildable lot, although the structure presently, as it exists, has some protection. But it, that property is not a detriment to neighborhood, nor a detriment to my client's enjoyment of her property. But the proposal, the new project, would be a substantial detriment. So, when we look at the project that's proposed, it's going to be nineteen feet higher than what's there now, it's gonna be three feet closer to the, uh, my client's property, uh, it's gonna be forty feet in, in width, running side to side at an angle, and, um, the, in terms of bulk analysis, it's, it's gonna run up to seventy percent. So, it, it's quite a different proposition altogether, whereas the other, the existing house is not a detriment, I don't think, in any, in any aspect. This new project is basically going to, at least in terms of my client personally, um, and you don't have to base your decision exclusively on how it's gonna impact her, but among the standards are, does it impair views and vistas? That's within the, the, uh, not substantially detrimental criteria the board can take into account. Does, does the project, is it gonna impair views and vistas? And I think that's a reference to citizens of, residents of the neighborhood, not people driving by. Uh, but when we get to the standards of what used to be two forty-two sixteen, and I'm frankly not up to speed on all the new numbers, but the, uh, the, this will also have an impact on the visual character of the neighborhood from public ways. I think, you know, up, up until recently, it's been a very, uh, old Cape characteristic, small houses on small lots, uh, it's becoming, and this will contribute to it, sort of a, have an urban feel to it, you're gonna have four, because I think the Steppians have obtained a building permit for their lot, so there's gonna be two new houses right there, there's gonna be four houses, if you count the two houses on Surf Drive, more or less shoehorned in, into one, what used to be one parcel, um, of just about forty thousand square feet. So, I think the character of the neighborhood, this, this project unfortunately, I think, will contribute to, to the alteration of the character of the neighborhood and, and how it appears, uh, the visual character of, of the neighborhood. This, this lot never had zoning protection with respect to frontage, and I, I won't go into all the citations in case law, but hopefully before you come to a conclusion- But hopefully, before you come to a conclusion on this, you may ask for some guidance from the town council as to whether or not it has ever been a lawful building lot with respect to frontage. And during the course of, after the structure was built, then there was another plan submitted. And the plan did not conform. It created a new lot. It used to be Lot D, now it's D1. And the area was reduced at a time when the minimum requirement was 10,000 square feet. So they basically recreated a new lot which didn't conform to zoning with respect to area. So I think there's a fundamental question. What rights does a lot which has been non-compliant from the beginning have? I don't think it has the same rights which a lawful building lot would have with a non-conforming structure located on it. 240, 216, among the criteria there is, is it adequate or suitable? Or is it in harmony with the purpose and intent of the bylaw? And I think to expand the structure, basically a new structure on an unbuildable lot, an illegal lot, is not in harmony with the purpose of the bylaw. And it suggests to me that the site is not suitable or adequate for the proposed project. The driveway situation is a problem. It's already been a problem for my client in terms of trying to get in and out of her driveway. Construction vehicles that have been there for the Steppian project, she's had to go out of her house and ask them to, will they please move so she can get out? So you've got two lots perpendicular to each other. And that, I think, you know, could pose a problem on a daily basis on that, on that site. So the, you know, for all these reasons, we think that this project would be substantially more detrimental than what's there. Because I think we're starting from ground zero in terms of detriment. The house that's there now is not a detriment. There's not significant enough improvement, I don't think, for the neighborhood in general. It's nice you can have mitigation plantings and so forth. But it's not, it's not an improvement for the neighborhood in general, I don't believe. It's not a popularity contest. And although I understand it makes sense for the Noonans to gather support from their neighbors, and that's, that's very nice. But there is going to be significant adverse impact to my client, which these other folks just don't face. They're not, they're not going to be impacted at all. My client is definitely going to be impacted, both, as I say, in daily living there. And I think the value of her house, which is substantial because of the location, there's going to be a wall in front of her house. So these are the reasons I would ask you to perhaps look into the legal side of things. You don't sit as a court, a remand court. But I think it's important that you have that, those facts in front of you before you decide in terms of weighing everything. Is it in harmony with the bylaw to create a new structure here? Kevin Clower said, well, what are we going to, what else are we going to do? Nobody's going to come and make the house come down. That's guaranteed, the existing house, that's protected. The question is, can you take that house down voluntarily and build a new house on that lot which doesn't have sufficient frontage to qualify as a building lot? So that's, I think those are the main points I wanted to make. I thank you because we've been here talking about this case now for, we had a series of hearings on the first application. And then we had a series of hearings on the second application. And here we are on the remand. And a lot of material has been submitted. And so I thank you very much for your attention.
Thank you, Attorney Kirk. And I suspect there might be a couple of board questions. Is there anything for Attorney Kirk? Anyone? Sherry?
Have you had a certified assessor agree with your conclusion that their value will be substantially reduced because of you?
No, I haven't.
And they do not have a view easement over that property?
No, there's no, actually, historically speaking, when that, Ms. Arques, Mrs. Arques and her husband basically developed the Seagull Lane development many, many, many years ago. And they did at the time, in order to preserve the value of those house lots and houses that were being constructed. They did impose a restriction, a view easement really, on those, a number of those lots. But because she was concerned even at that time with the question of maintaining that view for the land in that Seagull Lane area. But that restriction, that imposition of that easement expired as a matter of law. I think after 30 years or something. So that was, that expired sometime back. So long-winded answer, no, there's no easement, although once upon a time there was a restriction on the height of houses.
Thank you.
So here's one question. So regarding it, so we know that the property's been there and it was over the 10-year period, even if it's non-conforming. So you're making the argument that even though it has protection currently, its nonconformance in existence, that if it's removed, it loses that protection to rebuild?
It, I would think, I would, I do think that it, the structure as it currently exists is protected. But I don't believe the structure, because it's protected, confers any legality on the lot. This is an issue that comes up frequently. Courts tie themselves in knots trying to distinguish between, you know, impacts of deficiencies with lots and impacts and deficiencies with structures. And there's always a back and forth. But in, I haven't, I've never seen a case where they said the structure, which is protected under 10, 4810, and the bylaw, gives, let's say if there's an underlying non-compliant, illegal lot. I've never seen a case that says that confers some legality on the lot.
Attorney Kirk, wouldn't conforming to the new FEMA regulations be a benefit? And I'm not trying to be facetious, but-
The what regulation?
The FEMA regulations in terms of going up. And I'm not trying to be facetious with you, but the next Hurricane Bob comes along. And that affected the area tremendously, that storm. It comes along, picks up the existing Noonan house and slams it into your client's house.
If you see the Conservation Commission minutes, you'll see that Mr. Noonan appeared before Conservation. And he said his houses survived two hurricanes. So I don't think it's in, you know, it wasn't picked up and it didn't slam into anything. It's still, it's still there. I, in terms of detriment, you know, I, I don't think, I think detriment is talking about day to day. Not something that happens every, you know, pick a number of years, hurricane, 30, 40, 50 years. Yes, it's, I think, you know, the FEMA regulation certainly makes sense for houses that are constructed in that zone. But I don't think that that benefit, that the house will be in better shape, the Noonan house would be in better shape when a hurricane comes, is the way to judge zoning detriment here or lack of zoning detriment. I think by the house, if it wasn't FEMA that made them do it, they wanted the house just to be taller on their own. I think that's, that's a detriment. So it's a detriment because of the size of the house. Sure, if a hurricane comes along, there'll be some good, hopefully, they'll be, their property will be preserved. But it doesn't change the facts that, you know, that from my perspective, that there, it does not weigh the detriment that the size of the structure is going to cause.
Thank you.
I have a follow-up on that. So on the FEMA regulations, so we know that if you're doing the rebuild, they want to get you out of the flood zone. And in my opinion, it does, it does improve the properties because it brings them into compliance. But do the FEMA regulations require that when you do raise those houses, that those houses, do they look at them as if you take an existing house and just raise it to get out of the flood zone? Or is there anything in the requirements to say that if you do raise it out of the flood zone, you then have protection to actually build the house larger?
I don't-
If it's removed from the-
I've never, I haven't seen that. And the town bylaw doesn't create any exceptions for height because it has to be, because of the FEMA regulations. I think that's the, it's the bylaw that I think would sort of, should make that call, that recognize, if the bylaw, the town meeting wants to say, recognizing that certain places in town, if somebody wants to renovate, they've got to go up. And if they want to cut somebody some slack in terms of height, that would be, I think that's within the purview of the town meeting to do that. But that's, there isn't any exception here for that.
Mr. Chairman, if you may.
Sure, Scott?
Attorney Kirk, in the attempt to clean up the language for the record, so it's your assertion that the minute this pre-existing house with its protections is torn down, that lot loses the protection and falls under the unbuildability aspect of your argument?
Well, here's what I'm saying, is that it, yes, going, the board should not, and I don't think the bylaw allows this structure to be raised and then reconstructed on this lot. I know what Kevin wants to do is he wants to get, and it makes sense, get pre-approval. So if you say, we're going to allow him to do that, I don't think, then that's his permit. And he'd be entitled to go and do that.
We're not talking about Kevin, Mr. Clower.
Mr. Clower.
I'm asking you.
Right.
I'm asking you your opinion. Do you believe that it loses its protection the second that it's torn down? Because you had raised an argument about buildability. And in all fairness, Mr. Clower had raised the fact that what are we going to do with it? Nobody's going to make anybody tear that house down that's pre-existing.
That's right.
My concern is the minute it becomes no more, what is the classification on the lot with respect to your argument about buildability?
Well, if you give him the permit that he's looking for, that says you may raise and you may reconstruct on that raised lot regardless of its status, then he's going to be able to go and build unless an appeal is taken from, from the decision. So, you know, if you, if you make that decision, you'd be pre-authorizing it. So, you know, he, he would then have something in hand that says, I can knock it down and I can build.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Anyone else from the board?
Follow-up for Mr. Clower, if I'm sorry.
Sure.
Mr. Clower, if the, Attorney Clower, he knows attorneys are attorneys. I'm not going to be offended if he doesn't refer to me as Attorney Morris. Mr. Clower, what would be the existing ridge height if the existing structure was raised up on pilings and brought into FEMA compliance compared to what you're proposing?
29 feet.
And you're proposing the ridge height of the proposed after a teardown would be?
34 feet. The building, we showed the ridge comparison without the piers. This building is six feet, the building itself is only six feet larger than the existing building.
Thank you.
Ridge height difference.
Attorney Clower, I just want to make sure there's no one else for public comment on this? Anyone else at all? All right, not seeing any.
If I can actually speak for, if you have a question, I'd be happy to address it. But I have a few points I'd like to raise as well.
No, go right ahead.
Attorney Kirk referred to conflicting interests. Ms. Arques's interest is in her private view rights. She'd still have a commanding, sweeping view of Trunk River, of Vineyard Sound, of the Vineyard, of Surf Drive Beach. There's already a house in front of her, between her and Surf Drive Beach. 181 Surf Drive is directly in front of the applicant's house. And the board has routinely taken a position that they're not in the business of protecting private view rights. The visual character of this neighborhood has changed. It's changed dramatically, not only along Surf Drive, but the houses on Seagull Lane along the river are all either elevated or at least two and a half stories. In fact, I think it's fair to say that if this house doesn't change, it's the one that's out of character. Because you're going to have houses that are two and a half stories or elevated surrounding it on all sides, including Ms. Arques to the north, Steppians to the west, the Smiths to the south, which is Portages to the southwest, are all either elevated or two and a half stories. I also think it's important to note that our current bylaw would allow for this to be built if it was a vacant lot today. Our bylaw says if you have a, in a residential C district, if you have a vacant lot with at least 20 feet of frontage and 7,500 square feet, it's protected under the zoning bylaw. You have 30 feet of frontage and we have over 7,500 square feet. I'm not saying that we have to, should even have to make that argument. But if we're going to go down this rabbit hole of is it buildable, is it not? It would be buildable today even if there was no house there. If it's protected, it's protected under Mass General Law, Chapter 48, Section 10. It says if a house has been there for more than 10 years, it's actually six years if you have a building permit, but 10 years even if you don't have a building permit. It says that it becomes a legal, non-conforming structure. Legal, non-conforming structures may be altered by special permit from the Zoning Board of Appeals. It's protected under Mass General Laws, Chapter 48, Section 6. And it's protected under, what was 243C, and I don't, can't think of the number. There was a deed restriction, like Mr. Kirk referred to, Attorney Kirk, but it never applied to this lot. The Arqueses did develop some lots along this, the lots to the southwest where 199 Surf Drive was rebuilt a number of years ago. Those lots were subject to a deed restriction. These lots were not. That deed restriction expired in 2014, about two weeks before we submitted the application for 199 Surf Drive. And Ms. Arques opposed that because it was going to interfere with her view. That's been her overarching concern all along, is her view, not the neighborhood, not concern for the character, her view. And this board has always, as long as I've been here, taken a position that they're not in the business of protecting private views.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question if you may.
Sure.
Didn't you just make an assertion or a comparison that if we, if we don't approve this and that stays at its level, it will impact their views because of all the houses that are higher?
Not their views, I said it would be out of character with the neighborhood.
So the height, why would it be out of character? Because it's-
It would be, it would be the only house that wasn't either elevated for flood zone requirements-
When I talk about that, the way I heard that was, the minute you said that, I thought, what's the difference between what the abutter is complaining about, that there's be a house that they, that's taller than theirs and would infringe on their views?
I'm not, I'm not concerned about their views. We talked, I was talking about the visual character of the neighborhood.
I'm just going on your state.
Sure, no, I understand. I, I think-
All things being relative, it sounded like the same argument that Mr. Kirk was making about his client.
So I want to point out, that's not been my overarching argument tonight. That was one comment that I made. But I also think it was not intended the way you might have interpreted, Mr. Zelinski. Because I was trying to discuss the visual character of the neighborhood. And the visual character of the neighborhood has changed. And I think that what was proposed is in line with that visual character.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Anything else?
Yeah, just a quick follow-up. So again, from the meetings in all in the past, so what is the area that you consider the neighborhood?
I, I mean, we've got three direct abutters, one, or four direct abutters, two on Seagull Lane, two on Surf Drive. I think that every house along Seagull Lane is either two and a half story, on Seagull Lane along the river is either two and a half stories or is elevated. I think that the two houses to the south are elevated. I know that the Steppians, if they've obtained their building permit, that will be elevated because it has to be. I think the houses on the corner of Surf Drive and Walker, or Middle Road, rather, are elevated. And I think those are all houses that you could- are elevated, and I think those are all houses that you could swing a stick and hit a house at. So, I would call out the neighborhood.
So, you're going by the, so you're going by basically an, an area, like a circumference versus, because this house is only accessed by Seagull Lane, correct?
So, when we do, when we do a lot comparison analysis, we look at the houses within a three-hundred-foot radius. That's how we've always prepared it, when we look at the neighborhood. We don't look at specific streets necessarily, we look at the houses in the surrounding area.
So, if you're coming in from the, so let's say you're coming in from the Mill Road side.
Mm-hmm.
How does this, how does this, at a new elevated level at the size that's being proposed, how is that not out of character on all those entrancing homes on-
So, when you pull on, when you pull on to Seagull Lane from Surf Drive, the first house you look at along the river is at thirty-two feet?
But when you pull in to Seagull Lane-
That's the first house you're looking at on Seagull Lane, when you pull in, not the house in front of you.
So, you're comparing it to just the houses that are on the river, not the other properties that are contained within Seagull Lane?
I think when we look at overall averages, we are well within those parameters.
All right, that's all I have, thanks.
All right. Anything else from the board?
I had a follow-up question, because that triggered when I was reading the notes, that we don't have a definition of neighborhood. I thought you might have mentioned that, Mr. Chair.
That was a previous comment I made. No, no definition of neighborhood within the bylaws.
Okay, all right.
And I might repeat that during board discussion.
I just, okay.
All right. Anything else from the board? Okay. Have we heard everything that we need to close the hearing?
Mr. Hurry, if I could make a request, I know the board has gotten away from doing this, but given the history of this project, if the board would consider having, or a discussion, or at least providing an opportunity to reopen the hearing after discussion, if, I might be able to provide clarification or comments that, that can help. But this has been, you know, the Newans have been through a long process here, and I just want to be as fair and transparent as we can.
Oh, sure. I think if, if we close the hearing now and the board has a discussion, if board's discretion to reopen, depending on which way it might be leaning, we, we might be able to do that.
So, my only issue with that-
Chairman, I believe too, I would just ask that we confirm in the remand order, parraf-
It actually specifically gives us-
Five is compelling us to give the applicant the opportunity to withdraw, and I just want to make sure that procedurally, we adhere to the court's order.
Very good. Thank you, James. So, if that has to be done, then we'll do it. Is there a motion to close the hearing?
I'd make a motion to close.
All right. Motion closed made by Bob, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Scott Peterson. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. House unanimously, hearing is closed, no more testimony may be taken. Shall we have a discussion? Want me to kick it off? All right, so, this was a remand, according to the remand order, this hearing supersedes any other hearing that we've had, so comments might become a little repetitive, I'll make some similar comments that I made last time. Jerry, as, as you mentioned, neighborhood is undefined with, in our bylaws, and I think it should stay that way. It gives this board some discretion, some leeway when interpreting what a neighborhood is and applying it to each and every application that we see, at least when it comes to a neighborhood, what I consider to be a neighborhood, obviously the immediate area. Attorney Clower did mention bulk calculation, so I ta, I take that into consideration, size of lots in the area, the bulk and the size of the houses, whether they might be first story or second story, take all that into consideration, and also within this area, there is the FEMA regulations to deal with, and that is something I do take into consideration myself, and that's something this board has struggled with, with, for a while. Neighborhoods such as this, first house or so goes up, and that may become an outlier, and then over the years, of course, you have more applications like this one come, come along, and they're all becoming, increasing in size, increasing in bulk. Yes, this board does have discretion within special permits to perhaps negotiate and try to get projects smaller, but eventually in, in this area, if homeowners do choose to re-raise and reconstruct, rebuild their homes, you're going to see nearly every house in the area come under FEMA compliance. So, again, I would be in favor of voting for this project.
I agree with you, Mr. Chairman, I'm in favor of the approval. I for, the, I'm certainly cognizant of neighbor concerns and objections, it's kind of drives usually my decision-making process, but in weighing the equitable principles, FEMA compliance and getting houses in compliance with FEMA regulations is a compelling interest because it drives insurance rates of everyone in the town or anyone in a flood zone. So, I asked the specific questions about what the, the height would be, twenty-nine versus thirty-four, and I think that even if the existing structure was just simply put up on pilings, I think that the neighbor's view would be, clearly would be impacted, but the reason to do that, I think, is a compelling one that overrides her view being diminished the same way, is that if the neighbor was objecting, who is objecting, if her house had to go up, and her neighbor was now complaining to the north that the view would be impacted, say, well, it's, it is what it is, it's the FEMA regulations, and unfortunately, it's a compelling reason, it has to be done. I also note that, I think that the applicant has made significant concessions, and has tried to rework the project as best as possible. There are reductions in non-conformities. The other issue that I, clearly, the, the neighborhood, I think, tipped a long time ago in terms of the height of a lot of these dwellings. I've ridden Surf, Surf Drive on my bike since the nineteen-eighties when I was a kid, riding to Woods Hole, and post-hurricane, Bob, if you look, as soon as you turn on the Surf Drive, in the last twenty-plus years, anything in the flood zone has had to go up. So, I think that the general character of the, and I, that's a very expansive definition of neighborhood, but even in that particular, say, a three-hundred-foot radius, which I think is a more realistic, honed-in definition of neighborhood, things have gone up, I think that the FEMA regulations are the driving factor. So, while I'm always cognizant of neighbor issues, objections, and this particular view, I think will be impacted, it's unfortunately for a compelling reason. So, I'd be in favor of the project.
All right. Thank you, James. Anyone else?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I, um, I've never had an issue with, with those aspects of it. While I wasn't a voting member on the last hearing, I was in attendance and did have input. My, my biggest problems with this project is, is, and has always been the driveway access and emergency access in the event that there's something, something catastrophic that happens in getting to it. But above all else, my major concern, and I wouldn't have voted for this the first time, because of the intrusive nature of the sub-construction that close to a waterway. You know, nobody has brought up the fact that, you know, this excess of building close to these waterways have some effect on them, and for that reason alone, the protection of the waterway, the seawall, and what goes on there, I wouldn't be in favor of it.
All right, so I was, yeah, so I was on, of course, all the other hearings, and I know there's been really no change to this plan because we're looking at the same plan as, that was done before, so my arguments are pretty much going to be the same as I had previously. I completely understand bringing it into compliance for FEMA, and FEMA does offer protection to the surrounding, the town, the surrounding properties, but the requirements for FEMA to come out of the flood zone don't take into effect that once you pull out of the flood zone, you have to actually build larger properties on top of the elevations. It's been seen that, we get the arguments from applicants, that we understand that, but it's a hardship, if we're going to have to do FEMA, we want a bigger house. In the case of this property, you're going from property that's a three-bedroom to a four. Now, how, how you look at it, you know, the increase in bedrooms is going to have to have an increase in use at some point. As Scott noted, I have a major concern with the access. Just because my one vehicle could not get out, I tried three or four times, I could not get out without backing into an adjacent property. If I was at the property and I could have figured out a way to do that, and it was ease, I could understand, but even once I backed out, I had to back down Seagull Lane. I, I couldn't go forward on Seagull Lane. As far as neighborhood, you're right, there is no definition of neighborhood in the bylaw, everyone's going to have to look at it on their own. I understand bulk and size and what you're next to, but for me, access has always been something that I've used to define neighborhood. There is no access to this lot, except from Mill Road, from Mill Road to Seagull Lane. When you do come in on that side of the house, I mean, on that side of the property, the homes are completely different, they aren't raised, they are all smaller, modest homes like, like this one is. And if there's going to be this raise on, on FEMA, and we're going to, and we're going to look at it that, okay, we'll raise the properties as they are in FEMA, and then we'll let them go, even another six feet, the problem with the other six feet is, it's, it's doubly emphasized because you've already raised the property up seventeen that's required. So, when you have that, it has, any height difference, once you raise it, has more emphasis on, on bulk in an area. From the original application to the second application, which is the same application they see today, I brought up the issues that I had with bulk and size, and I know there's been some concessions on sidelines. I personally don't think a five-to-six inch change in building height is a big enough change for me. On Mr. Kirk's argument, I do have a problem that if this house was removed, they said you, you couldn't put it up in the structure. I haven't looked at the court cases, but in my opinion, if you remove the house, there's no reason you couldn't put it back in the same, in the same foundation that's in.
We've done that before, with leaving a wall and all of that before.
I think there's precedent for it, but making it larger does change access and use, and it's a very, I mean, even the road going into Seagull Lane, I don't know what that width is, but it has to be undersized of what somebody would look at today. You had a comment about some construction vehicles, has nothing to do with this application, has to do with another application, but if you're looking at the construction of this, if this was to pass and be constructed, where do you put construction vehicles? Where do you put materials? There is no, there is no location without blocking some part of somebody's driveway or some part of the way, unless somehow you have stuff on Mill Road and you drive back and forth, so I don't even know how that construction issue could be regulated.
But in all fairness, we've had agreements with the abutters before that had made agreements to lend their property to the construction process.
But in this case, because, I guess the way the lots were broken up and what they are, the size of the lots, you don't, you don't have that extra area you can automatically go with. There isn't, there isn't a lot of places you can deal with. So, unless there was an adjustment on the bulk of the house, I, I do have a problem that, when you compare it to the house directly in front of it, which is the first house that's on the inlet, that probably was the first house that was ever raised in that area, if you look at the style of that house, even from, even from Surf Drive, this one's bigger than that one. If this was even closer to a bulk of that one, or changes in roof lines, I'd probably have been more inclined to it, but, but without that, my vote would still be, would still be no on the current project.
All right. Scott, anything?
No, my position is, as I stated earlier, is to approve as the applicant has proposed.
All right, so if we were to take a vote tonight, we'd be looking at three to two, I suppose. So, I think we would have to reopen the hearing and get comment from Attorney Clower.
We'll reopen the hearing, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
All right. Motion to reopen made by James, second by Bob, all those in favor?
Aye.
Hearing is reopened.
Thank you, gentlemen, for the discussion, I really appreciate it. I mean that. I have to talk with my client, I have to talk with the architect, there may be ways to reduce the bulk of the height in some, some manner, I don't know. I don't know how we can ever do anything that changes what Mr. Zelinski uses, the intrusive nature of construction. I mean, we have a number of houses in, in areas like that where construction occurs on a regular basis. I think we have a very competent architect and engineering firm in play who have designed this, that's gone through CONCOM review, and been approved by, by CONCOM, and, and people who have a very vested interest in making sure that what they do doesn't harm this property long-term.
What about a protection wall behind the, the stone wall, Attorney Clower?
I, I, I-
I mean, you said there's no way, there are always ways to put back water.
No, I said I'm not sure what we can do.
Right.
Because I, that is, it's, it's, quite honestly, it's above my pay grade, I-
Okay.
That is something that I would defer to the engineers and the architects on, because I don't know what may or may not be possible. Say there was some way of doing some sheathing or something of that nature, you know, maybe that is enough to address your concerns, Mr. Zelinski, I don't know. What I don't want to do is, is ask for a continuance and, and see if we can do some sheathing or something of that nature, which I'd leave to the, the people who do those things, just to come back and have it be the driveway access, which is, I think, still a vast improvement over what exists, or, or the size of the structure. And I'm, I'm not asking you specifically, but I don't want to put ourselves in a situation where we're asking for continuances and stretching this on if the changes we make aren't going to be sufficient to address those concerns. So, as much as I really don't want to withdraw, you know, I need to know if, what I'm trying to figure out is if, if we did make those, some of those changes, whether or not that might be sufficient to get us there, or if it's, if it's not that, then it's the next thing, is, is my question, my concern. And if we could have some discussion, perhaps, just in fairness to the applicants.
That's a decision you have to make.
Well, I'm, I'm asking, I'm asking if-
I'm not personally prepared to condition this and give you an administrative approval until-
Nor am I asking.
Somebody comes back with some serious information that at least satisfies some of my concerns.
Can I just have one moment to speak with my clients? I would like to request a continuance, so we can have a chance to explore some other options in terms of the engineering of the site, and, and showing that the access does in fact work with some turbulence, perhaps, things of that nature. So, I think that we can address those. I, I don't know when the next hearing date, availability would be.
How, how long do you think you'd need to-
The problem is we don't have an engineer here tonight, so I don't, I don't know. And there's been some change over at Homes McGrath, as Tim Santos and Mike McGrath have both left. So, I know that the new owner is getting up to speed on everything.
A couple, was it, was it a couple of weeks' work, or?
Yeah, I think, I think, you know, if we could do four weeks, that would give us three weeks to get our reduction around.
Going into April, are we meeting April seventh and April twenty-first, Maureen?
So, I, I would like to try to do April seventh, if that's possible, because there's less. Do you think April seventh would work?
And if it doesn't, we'll, we'll let you know.
All right, so then I would, I'd make a motion to continue this to April seventh, twenty-twenty-two, to give the applicant time to see if they can rework their plans and go over any comments that they received tonight.
We're still open, right?
We're still open.
We never voted to close.
No.
I'll second. Mr. Chair, there was an overriding concern for a couple of people with construction access, and where are you going to put materials, and I would think you may want him to address that, or construction phasing, and maybe not, I'm not voting member.
Yeah, that, that might be worth looking into.
Yeah, I think, even if he reviews the video, I think he has a good idea what the different comments we have.
Seared into my, my mind, I'll see it when I close my eyes tonight, I think.
So, Bob, you were making the motion?
So, a motion to continue to April seventh.
I'll second his motion.
All right. Motion, continue April seventh, made by Bob, second by Scott Zelinski, all those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much, we, we appreciate your time, and, and careful thought on this.
Thank you, Attorney Clower.
Mr. Chairman, I know we're still continuing, uh, continuations, can we just take a quick break?
Sure, we'll take a five-minute break. one thirteen dash twenty-one, Miranda, 105 Redlands Road in East Dallas, requesting a special permit slash variance to allow home occupation for indoor swimming lessons slash aqua classes. Voting numbers on this are myself, Scott Zelinski, Bob Dugan, James Morse, and Scott Peterson.
Okay, so I have, so in the file, are you going to be requesting a continuance?
We are.
Is that what this is?
Yes.
So, um, before they make-
On what grounds, though?
Well, before we even-
Am I to ask that?
Yeah, you can, but before we even- Yeah, you can, but before we even make the request, I, there's just, there's been two submittals. I just want to get them into the record, because the hearings already been opened. So there's been, there's been two submittals of letters, one March tenth. This is from a Bunny Rose Walls. Does not give any location or address. Dear zoning board, my name is Bunny Rose Walls. I was born and raised on Cape Cod. I have had a successful thirty years in the fitness industry. Cut short due to an ALS diagnosis, commonly known as Lou Gehrig's disease, debilitating disease that basically paralyzed the victims, had a toe over the course of two to five years before eventually kills them. When I was first diagnosed, I was sent to PT and OT for a limited time. Being someone who has knowledge about the human body and knowing how ALS works, most of the things they were instructing me to do were counterproductive of what I felt I needed. People with ALS and other crippling diseases like it need passive stretching, range of motion exercise, light massage, and hot water therapy. There isn't anything like this on Cape Cod, so Sandy is onto something here. In addition to all the other things, she can utilize her pool for such things as aquatic classes, private sessions, and swimming lessons. It would be an asset to the community. I met Sandy back in 2013, before I was diagnosed. She was taking a semester at Cape Cod Community College to earn her personal trainership certification. She asked me to mentor her as a personal training, training course required her to intern for thirty hours. I took her on my wing and taught her how to teach group classes and personal training. During that time, she was also in massage school. I was one of the lucky ones who had a practice on me. I've always been impressed with her relentless ability to learn. She has a fierce drive and extremely intelligent. She has a wealth of knowledge. She is immensely talented as well. Never stops reinventing herself and will continue to grow. She wants to help people by getting them to move their bodies. The pool was a dream she implemented during the pandemic. When nothing was available to people, this COVID period was a time when owners had to think outside the box so they could keep their businesses afloat. Sandy found a way to do that by building her own pool, using a loan made for that purpose. As a female owner of a small business on Cape Cod, she has worked hard to establish herself as a big part of the community, offering therapeutic exercise classes and spa services. Reading the articles and following the story, I felt obligated to support her efforts to bring the community pool to do her classes. I have also introduced her to co-founder of CCALS, Ron Hoffman. Hopefully, they can work together to create a relationship where she could utilize all of this ADA equipment she needs to purchase in order for the Board of Health to give her a special permit. Sandy is an ethically responsible adult who trusted that the people who are doing the work knew what permits codes and limitations, and limitations to following. There are new lessons she has learned. The work that has been done after Sandy was informed of the permitting issue definitely shows good faith in her ability to fix whatever wasn't done properly. I can only dream that I will be able to go there at her therapeutic pool to get a massage in the water. Knowing Sandy by then, she'll have taken seven different courses and get certificates to operate the chairlift. And whatever else is needed to utilize the indoor saltwater therapeutic pool, please consider issuing her a permit. Okay, this is a submittal, February twenty-third, and this is from Scott McGann regarding the Board of Health. The pool was operating to the public. Some classes have even been sponsored by the Mashpee Rec Center. Health issued a cease and desist order included in this email, and there's, and there's copies of everything that's discussed. They were also in front of the Board of Health this past fall after they issued the order. At this point in time, there should be no classes or other use of the pool. In terms of the building permits, in my opinion, is that there were no mention of it being commercial use. It began as an outdoor pool permit, which Health signed, and later a permit for the structure to make it an indoor pool, which Health signed. Neither indicates commercial use, for example, semi-public or public swimming pool. I can assure you, if that was the case, we would have never had them address the differences between a home use pool and a semi-public public pool. Since the order and subsequent Board of Health meeting, Health has met the applicant on-site to go over what would need for the pool to be able to be licensed as a semi-public pool, which was done as a courtesy. Some issues, from my memory, were the exterior entrance needed to be self-closing, there needed to be an automatic chlorination feed system, the pool steps cannot protrude into the pool. If they receive a special permit, Health will work with the owner to help them work towards compliance. With the semi-public public swimming pool regs, we can permit them annually, much like we do for other places like hotels and condos. And included in there are all the permits from the Building Department regarding the pool. It does say that they, it was personal, not a commercial, and also affidavits that were given to the Building Department regarding the project, as it was an outdoor pool. That one's signed by Sandra Miranda, and as, as the indoor enclosure, that one was signed by Eduardo Miranda. This is dated February twenty-third, is being received, but the letter's dated February twenty-first. It looks like part of this was a submittal to the editor of the Falmouth Enterprise, but a copy was dropped off to the Zoning Board of Appeals, as well as the Select Board members, town manager, and assistant town manager. As residents of the Schumitt Valley, we have followed the unfolding story of the commercial indoor swimming pool constructed at a private residence at 105 Redlands Road, East Falmouth. The whole saga should have never been allowed to proceed on many levels. The original application was incomplete and misleading in that the diagram submitted, depicted a pool for personal use and no indication given for commercial business operation. It appears to show only an outdoor pool and deck. As construction commenced, it is inconceivable and inspection did note discrepancies as the project morphed from an outdoor pool into an enclosed poolhouse and facility, complete with dressing rooms and restroom. The new poolhouse is over four hundred square feet larger than the attached house. There are two new unauthorized driveways and a parking lot for fourteen cars of courier. The Falmouth zoning bylaws in a residential zone specifies home businesses not exceed thirty percent of the home square footage and allow no more than two extra parked cars. No question, there is a need for indoor pools, swim lessons, and therapeutic programs. However, commercial development of the residential lot for a pool business is not allowed by zoning. Ms. Miranda testified to the large number of clients she has been able to reach, both individuals and groups from within Falmouth and surrounding towns, including contract, a contract with the Town and Mashpee Recreation Department as part of her business. The Board of Zoning Appeals must deny this request because approval would nullify the intent and purpose and guidelines of residential zoning and development. Further, we strongly urge the Town of Falmouth to initiate an investigation on how this project could have possibly gone so far without proper oversight, and there are attachments to that letter.
All right. Thank you, Bob.
And then, just as tonight, as I just asked, we do have a letter that was submitted today, Wednesday, March ninth, at two sixteen, and it says, this was to Ashley, the administrative assistant. Says, Ashley, good afternoon. We are seeking a continuance of tomorrow's hearing. Actually, we see, yeah, so it was submitted Wednesday, which is yesterday. We are seeking continuation of tomorrow's hearing. Please let us know if you'd like a formal request, or if this email is sufficient. I'm happy to be present to request it to the Board tomorrow if necessary. My apologies for the late notice, and that's signed Anthony T. Ponabianco from Darrell and Everett.
All right. Thank you, Bob.
We also have a plot plan that was submitted today.
Any, any, any individual notes on the plot plan, or just the plot?
No. Yes, we'll see.
Okay. So a plot plan was submitted today, and it, we'll have to get an explanation of what it's related to.
All right. Thank you.
Good evening, Anthony Ponabianco, on behalf of the applicant. We are seeking a continuance today as a notice by Ms. DeMello and the correspondence to her. We're requesting a date, the April twenty-first date would be our preferred date for the continuance here. We do believe that with the additional plot plan that was provided and the Board of Health concerns that were raised, this provides us the opportunity to provide correspondence and communications with the Board of Health and a supplemental narrative to the Board for that April twenty-first hearing, so that there's a full and complete understanding from, for this Board as to the applicant's process and what we're seeking. And with that, we are asking the continuance to April twenty-first.
All right. Maureen, how does, how was April twenty-first looking now? Was it a doable date for us, or is it getting too full?
Before you, before you do that, may I ask you a question?
Uh-huh.
Your description for the request, you didn't identify any of the zoning issues that we, did you watch the tape of the last hearing?
Yes.
So you understand the uphill battle with, with respect to the zoning aspects of this?
We, we.
Not, not the health aspects?
Yes.
Not the public sentimental aspects? Not the public good, but the zoning aspects?
And.
Are those going to be addressed?
Yes, that's why I suggested a supplemental narrative to the Board that will address those concerns.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
So I have one question with that. So where those items will be addressed? So you'll be showing a lessening of the area that's allowed for the business?
Sorry, say that again?
So, so our zoning bylaw allows a home business, if we give a special permit, to be no more than thirty percent of the property, of the, of the home? And right now, it far exceeds the thirty percent? So to get to that thirty percent, you would have to be reducing the space?
Understood.
To reduce the space down to the thirty percent?
We'll address that concern in our supplemental narrative. That's where our intention is, to provide, the answers to the questions that were raised at the prior hearing, is to provide that to the Board. And with the addition, the new plan today, we just received it today, so we have to take that into account to address those concerns on a zoning level.
So could you just explain, because the plan that came today didn't come with any description? It's just a plan? So do you know what this plan reflects, why it was sent to us?
The, I think it's necessary for the Board to, we want to be as transparent as possible. It's the first plan that we have for this to show, and it will be addressed in our supplemental narrative and an analysis of that as it applies to the property and the relief that we're seeking, the special permit that we're seeking.
Well, counsel, you're asking for variance, and that's extraordinary relief. So I have no problem giving a continuance, but I expect you to be fully prepared to address the standard for a variance, because I will not be inclined to give a continuance beyond April. There are people who have been coming to these meetings now twice, expecting a hearing.
Understood.
Thank you.
So as such, that James would say, I would want to be clear that you will be reducing the space used for the home business to the thirty percent maximum, because if that's something that can't be done, that's something that can't be permitted through our zoning.
Yeah, but all he's asking for is a continuance. He knows what he's going to come back with, and either he's going to have it or he's not. Let's not debate this tonight.
No, no, I, I understand that, but looking at the plan and what we presented last week, in order to do that, to get this down to thirty percent, you, you either are taking, you're taking a lot out, because your business is basically the pool and all the surrounding space, the bathrooms, the dressing rooms. Is that even, is that feasible?
We believe that it is, and to be zoning compliant, we understand the variance relief that we're requesting, and to Attorney Morse's position, the soil conditions, topography, structures, land, we understand the requirements for that variance relief.
Mr. Chairman, ask and answer.
All right.
Mr. Chair.
Yep.
One, did you say that the use would only be fourteen hours a week?
No, we can't.
He's not discussing.
They're only asking for continuance.
Well, no, the question was how you, we do.
We're getting in the weeds.
Fourteen hours out of seven days is eight percent use. One person asked how it could be reduced. I'm asking that if the hours of use are considered along with the space, the space requirements could be reduced, because the hours are fourteen hours a week.
They are only asking for continuance.
Well, I was just following.
The question has been asked, are they prepared to bring back what's needed?
Very good. Okay.
All right. And the answer was.
It's unfair for the applicant to be put in a position where he has to give testimony that he may be unprepared for, because he's only asking for a continuance.
Okay.
Thanks, Jerry.
I, I do just have one more comment, that I just want to make sure. The letters that were submitted, and it seems like there has been a continued upgrade of the facilities, and I just want an understanding that any upgrades of the facilities that you're doing on your own, having to do with building or health, have nothing to do with our permitting process? So that, I know there was an issue before with hardship, and I mentioned this before, and it seems that that's their going forward. I just want to make sure you understand, any changes made regarding whatever the health requires has nothing to do with our permit.
Certainly, of course. Yes.
All right. Attorney Maureen, again, I'm just making sure that April twenty-first is a good date. I, I don't have it on my sheet, so I don't know if it's getting to be busy, or.
Yeah, April twenty-first will work.
So, so who, who do we have right now on April twenty-first?
Noonie? No. It's also on the.
I wonder if we could bump it up to the seventh?
We have a forty B on April seventh as well.
So would it be possible you have all that information available for April seventh?
It'd be, it'd be tight.
It's just we have a forty B on the twenty-first.
Hmm.
And.
On the seventh, you do.
Oh, which one? On the, on the seventh?
On the seventh, right.
It's up to you. I just think, let's, we can start going to the twenty-first. It's a little.
All right.
Oh, did we announce who was voting for this?
It's on paper, I think.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, we already did this, yeah.
Scott.
The other's got. Then one.
It's up to you. I'd rather, I'd rather it be the seventh, but if people are able to the twenty-first, you know, twenty-first is going to be a forty B, and I just think it's tough, and I understand they're going to make adjustments, but if they could do enough of the basics so that we knew they could even come close to the bylaw.
Because in all honesty, we thought that's what you were coming for, before us tonight with. We gave the applicant all the opportunity in the world to straighten out the zoning issues part of this. We heard all the rest of the testimony, which, you know, was, was heartfelt and legit, but one thing has nothing to do with the other, and that's why we thought you were coming tonight. And then to find out you're looking for another continuance tonight was a little off-putting, because we thought we were going to be able to resolve this one way or the other tonight.
Understood. We don't anticipate any more continuance requests. We anticipate having a full briefing for the Board and analysis of the zoning and the request made for that April twenty-first hearing, if possible.
Thank you.
But I know I'm not a voting member, but considering they said it's going to be tight in the past, I thought we've always given the applicant a chance to make sure he can come fully prepared. We may think twenty-first is plenty of time. They're advising the Board.
And I, and I understand that. I'm just looking at our scheduling in general and what's on the twenty-first.
Push it out further.
You know, I wouldn't want to push it out further. It's, it's been continued once as a courtesy, because Representative couldn't be here, so that gave them time to review this. We actually got this continuation on Wednesday, which is only two days before. They've had weeks to review. They, they could have reviewed this and given us a week ago, and we still could have, you know, saved time.
We did that out of courtesy for you, because you couldn't be here.
And I.
And she had, she had explicit instructions on what we were expecting when you came back.
And we appreciate that, and I appreciate that personally, and we don't anticipate any further requests, and we're not seeking them.
Thank you.
All right.
Mr. Chairman.
I guess we're looking at the twenty-first, then. I mean, it's, our schedule is what it is, and it's.
So then I would, I would make a motion that we continue the twenty-first with the understanding we will not be continuing after the twenty-first.
All right.
I'll second that motion.
Yeah, the motion was made to continue the twenty-first.
Point to the question. How do we know without what the testimony is going to be that we cannot continue it? I think that's presumptuous.
Well, we've given two continuations now, basically on.
We don't know what the facts would be.
We have a motion to continue under consideration.
And a second.
All right. So the motion to continue to April twenty-first was made by Bob, second by Scott. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Passes unanimously.
Thank you, Bart.
Thank you, and we'll see you next time.
Excuse me, do you want to sign for that date? Pardon my scratch, I should have prepared in advance, but you can file that and send you a copy.
All right. Up next, onto our new hearing scheduled for six-thirty, we have application two dash twenty-two, Duffy, trustees, forty-four Lake Shore Drive North in East Falmouth, requesting a special permit to rebuild the pre-existing non-conforming single-family dwelling.
Okay, so application two dash twenty-two, John E. and Mary A. Duffy, trustees, two two oh nine Arrowhead Road, Marshfield, Mass., have applied to the Zoning Board of Appeals for a special permit pursuant to sections two forty dash ten point two A, previously two forty dash three C of the Code of Falmouth, to raise and rebuild the pre-existing non-conforming single-family dwelling on subject property known as forty-four Lake Shore Drive, East Falmouth, Mass. For referrals. So, from Concom dated March second, twenty twenty-two, we have a copy of the Order of Conditions.
I'm sorry, Bob, did you say we received them, or?
Yeah, we did. We actually received it, so it, it's, they receive, we received a copy of their Order of Conditions, and that's dated March second. This is a revised comment from Water, so I'll read this one first versus the other one. It says, "It is acceptable that they show the main and curb box, and even have a note about addressing the unknown location of the service on site near the septic." And-
Can you repeat that?
You know, let me give you the original referral, and then I'll go to that one.
Sorry.
That's good.
It just didn't come out, I didn't sound right. Yeah.
Okay, so the original referral from Water was, "The water main is shown in the plans as required, and please show the water service on the final plans, and confirm no conflicts with other utilities, driveways, septic systems, or equipment during construction. And then the new home will have to have the water meter inside and not in the pit." The revised is, it is acceptable that they show the main and the curb box, and even have a note about addressing the unknown location of the service on site near the septic. We appreciate the revision, and we will approve it as presented.
Question.
Question.
Uh, the original Concom was that they were under notice with temp, but we already have that. Order of Conditions. Our planning board no comment. From engineering. Application was reviewed for impacts to public rights of way, public utilities. Lake Shore Drive is a public right-of-way in this area. No alterations proposed to the right-of-way. Any changes within the right-of-way would require filing a permit with the Engineering Division. Any corrections or alterations to public utilities would require permission from the appropriate town department. Where the project falls in the jurisdiction of the Conservation Commission, we defer to that commission for stormwater management and erosion controls. Project must not direct any stormwater runoff to public property butters or public rights-of-way. Drywells are included in the design as we typically recommend. We also recommend adding, upon completion of construction, the applicant shall post the address for the residence per subsection ninety-nine-one affixing illegible numbers, time limit for compliance. Fire department has no issues with the project as drawn. We already did the water. From health, the property is located in a Zone Two, and has a lot size of fifteen thousand square feet, and would not be allowed an increase in bedrooms. The proposed layout versus the existing does not incre, does not indicate any increase in bedrooms over what currently exists, so health has no issues with the project. And I don't see any letters, so that's it.
All right, and voting number on this project, Jerry? You're going to be appointed at this one? Attorney Clower?
Good evening again, Mr. Chair. Members of the board, for the record, my name is Kevin Clower. I'm going to start by apologizing to you guys. I have the next four hearings in front of you. You're going to get real sick of my voice, and I'm sorry.
We're going to apologize to you, too.
For what will determine to be seen. I'm here tonight representing John and Mary Duffy, the owners of forty-four Lake Shore Drive North. They're seeking to raise the existing structure and to construct a new three-bedroom home on a very similar footprint to what exists. This is located on the shores of Jenkins Pond. Lots of fourteen thousand seven hundred fifty square feet, and it's in a residential C zoning district. Existing is a one-story, three-bedroom dwelling with a lockout basement at the rear. The footprints, eleven hundred and seventy square feet. Lot coverage by structure is only seven point nine percent. It's non-conforming to the setback of, to the waters of Jenkins Pond. It's thirty feet where fifty is required. Otherwise, it complies with front yard and side yard setbacks, as well as lot coverage requirements. The applicants have owned this property for over twenty years. They are, like many others, looking to make it their full-time residence and want to build a home with some additional space to accommodate their family's needs. Proposed dwelling has a slightly larger footprint, which provides much-needed space and amenities. Lot coverage by structure does increase, but it's only to eleven percent, which is well below the twenty percent allowed by right. Proposed ridge height is twenty-seven feet, seven inches, again, well below thirty-five feet allowed. The only conformity being the setback to Jenkins Pond is improved by four feet to thirty-four feet. Due to that existing nonconformity, however, we do require a special permit under two forty ten point two A four. This allows pre-existing, non-conforming structures to be altered when the board finds that it's not substantially more detrimental. The, the exact language they use is that the non-conforming structure is not different in quality, character, or degree from what was prevailing when bylaw took effect, and the non-conforming structure is not different in kind and its effect on the neighborhood. But effectively, it boils down to not more detrimental than what exists. Boards asked to consider the standard of two forty twelve point one E, formerly two sixteen, and whether or not the proposal creates any new dimensional nonconformities, impairments views and vistas, and reasonably conforms to the neighborhood. In this case, there's no new nonconformity created. The only existing nonconformity is improved. The structure otherwise complies with front and side yard setbacks and lot coverage requirements. There's no impact to views and vistas, and the proposal as designed remains consistent with the surrounding properties and size and scope. And it does constitute an improvement for the applicants, for their use, for their comfort, for their enjoyment. Will not create any new dimensional nonconformities, and the result is an attractive, useful home that's in character with the neighborhood, with no adverse effects that would overbalance the beneficial effects. I believe it meets the requirements of two forty ten point two A four and two forty twelve point one E. Based on this, I would ask that this board grant a special permit, and I would be happy to address any questions that you might have at this time.
All right, thank you, Attorney Clower. Board questions? Jerry, anything?
None at this time.
James?
No questions, thank you.
Scott?
No, thank you.
Bob?
No.
Unanimous, no.
No?
You can still mark it up.
I'm, I'm trying to come up with something.
I probably wanted to ask that question. It has nothing to do with the permit.
What color is that?
What color shouldn't it be? Let's put it that way. Do you want a question?
Any plans to sleeve that water line under the wall, right?
So, actually, that's mentioned in the note. The note here, and I'll zoom in a little bit. It says, "The location of the existing water service line from the service shut-off at the street to the existing house is unknown. The contractor shall uncover the water service and reroute or sleeve in all areas less than ten feet from the proposed septic system."
Thank you.
Attorney Clower, apologies if I didn't catch it during your presentation, but proposed height?
Twenty-seven feet, seven inches.
All right. What's existing?
I don't know. My guess, based on the plans, the existing plans, let's see. Based on the photos I've seen of it, probably fifteen, sixteen feet.
Fair enough. All right.
That's the only words he didn't know.
Yeah. Fair enough.
We're going to pigeonhole him on something. Right, Jerry?
All right, public comment, any questions, comments, or concerns regarding this project? Seeing none, back to the board.
Motion to close.
I'll second Mr. Morse's motion.
Motion to close made by James, second by Scott. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Passes unanimously. Hearing is closed. No more testimony may be taken.
Motion to approve with conditions.
Second.
All right, motion to approve with conditions made by Bob, second by James, and we are onto our new bylaws for, I think, the first time.
Yeah, so, um-
Forgot the numbers.
Sort of findings, the, um-
There we go.
Sort of.
The only nonconformity is the distance to waters of Jenkins Pond, which is thirty feet where fifty is required, but that will be improved to thirty-four feet. Otherwise, it conforms to all lot covered and setback requirements. Home currently has a three-bedroom. It's currently a three-bedroom, it's in a Zone Two, because three bedrooms currently exist, and there's no increase in bedrooms that's allowed per Board of Health. There are plans to replace the septic with a new Title V system for three bedrooms. We do have an Order of Condition from Conservation Commission. Engineering said that they will, they will refer to Concom for the soil erosion and sediment controls.
New ridge height twenty-seven, seven.
Yeah, current is approximately sixteen feet.
Eleven percent lot coverage.
Yeah, it's two forty ten point two A and two forty twelve point one E. Increases utilization.
And keeping with the neighborhood. Not more detrimental, that's in the new-
Yeah, so all of, all of two forty twelve point one E.
No opposition at the hearing?
Uh, nice project.
All right, anything else for findings?
No.
Conditions?
Per plans, you know, the engineering water conditions. Subsection ninety-nine-one of the affixing illegible numbers, work hours.
Do we send an ASBelt? Do we need a, a confirmed ASBelt from distance to the water? To confirm the thirty?
Well, it's currently thirty, it's going to increase to thirty-four, so it's, I mean, it's an increase in general.
You could ask for a foundation ASBelt. They normally do that for building department anyway.
All right, so we'll do a foundation ASBelt, just to confirm the increase to thirty-four.
Plenty of room on site for it.
Yeah, construction vehicles and materials to be kept on site. Conservation will be referred to for soil erosion and sediment controls.
It's pretty easy, that one.
They need a new Board of Health?
No, because it's a, it's a replacement system, and because it's a Zone Two with a current three-bedroom, they're allowed to keep a three-bedroom on the property, there's no improvement.
But they need a new Title V system approved by the Board of Health.
They already, they, Board of Health, they are putting, yeah, they are putting in a replacement system. It's actually part of the, part of Board of Health requirements.
Dun, dun, dun.
All right, anything else? All right, so that was a motion to approve made by Bob, and I think second by, sorry, was it Scott?
No, I think it was James.
Second by James.
James.
Second by James, all right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you, Attorney Clower.
Better up.
All right, up next, we have application three dash twenty-two, is it Nunez?
Yes.
Trustees, twenty-three Oak Street and T-Ticket, requesting a special permit to construct a dormer to the second floor of the pre-existing, non-conforming, single-family dwelling.
All right, application three dash twenty-two, Ronald W. and Sharon L. Noon's, trustees, thirty, twenty-three Oak Street, T-Ticket, Mass., have applied to the Zoning Board of Appeals for a special permit pursuant to sections two forty dash eleven dash three A four and two forty dash ten point two A of the Code of Falmouth, to construct a dormer to the second floor of the pre-existing, non-conforming, single-family dwelling on subject property known as Oak Street, T-Ticket. For referrals. From engineering, the application was reviewed for impacts to public rights of way and public utilities. Oak Street is a public right-of-way in this area. No alterations are proposed to the right-of-way. Any changes within the right-of-way would require filing a permit with the Engineering Division. It appears that a fence is located within the public right-of-way. Permanent installation of objects not owned by the town located within the municipal right-of-way typically require a license from the Board of Selectmen. This can be a condition under approval. Any connections or alterations to public utilities would require permission from the appropriate town department. Project must not direct any stormwater runoff to public property butters or public rights-of-way. Drywells are proposed for the roof as recommended. Conservation staff has no comment. The above referenced project is outside of Concom jurisdiction. From Kahala Water, the water service is shown in the plans as required. The existing home is a three-quarter water service. Bedroom is six-inch main and Oak Street. Existing service is smaller than a one inch and has a meter pit. We recommend applicant upgrade the service to a one inch and remove the meter pit, installing a new meter inside the renovated home. Planning, no comment. From health, the property is on Town Sewer, which allows four bedrooms by right in the sewer district. And that's the LPSSA district. They should list the districts, then we have multiple now. Fire department has no issues with the project as drawn. And no letters submitted for or against or concerns.
All right. And this project will be appointed Scott as voting member, Attorney Clower once again.
Good evening, again, for the record, Kevin Clower. I'm here tonight representing Ronald and Sharon Noon's, the owners of twenty-three Oak Street. They are seeking permission to alter the pre-existing, non-conforming dwelling. This property is located at the northern end of Maravista Avenue. It's a very dense neighborhood, it's somewhat homogeneous, it's very similar styled homes, similar sized lots. This lot in particular, seventy-two hundred square feet. It's in a residential C zoning district, and it is not in a flood zone. Presently, there's a four-bedroom, single-family dwelling and shed, sheds, the footprint's nineteen twenty-five, one thousand nine hundred and twenty-five square feet, and it is non-conforming to both front yard setback being fifteen point four feet where twenty-five is required, and lot coverage by structure being twenty-six point seven percent where twenty percent is allowed by right, and up to twenty-five by special permit. Otherwise, it is conforming to side and rear yard setbacks and lot coverage by structures paving and parking. The applicants are requesting to add a modest addition, which would expand the second floor, would improve the existing bedrooms up there, and allow for the creation of a home office area. Really, it better utilizes the layout and dimensions of, of the site of the house. The proposed changes will not increase the bedrooms, remains at four. There's no change to the ridge height, it's nineteen feet, one point five inches. Lot coverage by structure at twenty-six point seven will remain unchanged. But due to these existing nonconformities, we do require a special permit under both two forty ten point two A four and ten, two forty eleven point three A four, which are two forty three C and sixty-nine E respectively. Here, there is no new nonconformity being created. There's no change in the existing nonconforming setback, lot coverage, but it will improve the usability of the second floor. Again, the board's asked to consider whether or not what's being proposed is substantially more detrimental than what exists, and also whether or not there's any new dimensional nonconformities, any impairment of views and vistas, and reasonably conforms to the neighborhood. In addition, for lot coverage, we're asked to look at the size and height of structure relative to the size and height of structures in the neighborhood, the effect of shadow on adjacent properties, impacts on views and vistas, and the effect of nitrogen. In this case, there's no new nonconformity created. There's, the existing nonconformities are entirely unaffected. There's no change to the footprint of the structure. The proposal has no impact on views and vistas in public ways. There's no effective nitrogen, as it's the same number of bedrooms. And there's no change to the effect of shadow on adjacent properties, the ridge height remains the same. As to the size and height of the structure, we did submit the lot comparison worksheet. As we noted, it's a very dense neighborhood, most homes with similar footprints and similar lot sizes. The application doesn't change the footprint. It adds only two hundred and square, two hundred and four square feet of additional habitable space, which is all on the second floor within the existing footprint. And I think the comparison shows just how similar the neighborhood is to the subject property, both as existing and proposed. The applicant's proposal is an improvement for the applicant over the existing layout, better use of the existing space. Again, it doesn't create any new issues on the site or affect the existing nonconformities, and there's no adverse, adverse effects which would overbalance the benefits we've discussed. Again, I believe this meets the requirements of two forty ten point two A four, two forty eleven point three A four, and two forty twelve point one E one. I'm going to get used to these eventually. I believe that this board can and should grant a special permit, and I'd be happy to address any questions that you might have at this time.
All right, thank you, Attorney Clower. Board questions? Scott, anything?
I know the project makes sense as proposed, I guess, being new to the board. Could you just speak to the fence and the right-of-way?
Sure. We were just having this discussion outside, you know. Anytime you have a road layout, the road layout's typically somewhere around forty feet, but the, the actual pavement might be twenty feet. And people often mistakenly have the assumption that the first ten feet or so from the road towards their house is theirs. It's not, it's the town's. So, fences and walkways have a way of migrating to that area over time. Not saying it should, but, but it does, and I think it's true of most properties we see, and certainly some of these more well-developed neighborhoods. So, the Engineering Department has begun asking for us to obtain a license from the Board of Selectmen, which we've typically been doing as the application to begin to get the building permit. And it's a pretty simple process, which submit a simplified site plan. A license is a revocable agreement with the town. The town says, "Yes, we're allowing you to keep your fence on our property, but if we tell you to get rid of it, you're going to get rid of it." And although that's true, whether or not we sign the, the license, it gets recorded at the registry, so there's notice at least, and there's really no question. So, that's something that the, the board has been requesting lately and what we've been complying with. Thank you. No further questions.
All right, thanks, Scott. Bob?
So, I, just to follow up on that, so are they planning to try to keep the fence? Or are they just going to relocate it?
I, I don't know. I think if they want to keep the fence, I'm, I'm telling them-
Yeah, I was just asking, because, because, you know, usually when we hit the fences, most of the people just figure it's easier just to relocate- of the people just figure it's easier just to relocate them then.
Yeah, I don't know. I'll have the discussion with Ms. Newns.
Anything else, Bob?
That's it.
Scott?
No, sir, no, thank you.
James?
No questions, thank you.
No questions, sir.
Two sheds are remaining?
Yes.
All right. Was it for board questions? Public comment, any questions, comments, or concerns regarding this project? Seeing none, back to the board.
Motion to close.
Second.
Motion to close made by Bob, second by James, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, passes unanimously, hearing is closed, no more testimony may be taken.
Motion approved with conditions?
Sorry, I'm sorry.
All right, motion approved with conditions made by Bob, James just beat out Scott for that one.
All right, so I'm getting used to these two, but findings, 240-11.3A4, 240-12.1E, and 240-10.2A. They're increasing utilization, they're residential C, but they're not in the flood zone, but they are in a coastal overlay district, the property currently served by the town sewer, LPSSA sewer district. On the non-conformities, it's the front yard setback which is 15, four, where 25 is required, lot coverage by structure 26.7, where 20 is allowed by right, 25 by special permit. It's four bedrooms, remaining four, you can have four bedrooms by right on that sewer system. Water has commented that they will need an increase in water service and also to relocate the meter inside the house.
Doesn't create any new non-conformities?
No, no new non-conformities, there was notation that the fence in the property is currently relocated in the town road layout, and you would either need to remove the fence or receive a license from the board of selectmen to keep it in place.
Provided a lot comparison worksheet?
Yeah.
Keeping with the neighborhood, the densely populated, densely, the dense neighborhood.
No change in the ridge height?
No rebuttal opposition, no letters of opposition.
No.
Two sheds to remain?
Yep, it's in the lot coverage.
Applicant dictated that it was for a home office.
Anything else for findings?
No.
Conditions?
Per plans, increase in the service line to comply with water, to be increased to a one inch and need to locate inside the home.
Condition, either a license or removal of fence previous to building permit.
Yeah, so what they don't know what it is, they could either, if they decide not to relocate the fence onto the property, then they must receive a license from the board of selectmen prior to occupancy permit.
Now, that's the contractor or the applicant?
The owner has to get the license.
So there won't actually be an occupancy permit because the house already has occupancy?
It exists.
So what you can say is prior to final sign off?
Thank you, thank you.
There you go. Because then we lose out, so.
But there'll be a final sign off?
Yeah.
So.
Put in a finding that they already have dry wells on the plan for the roof runoff.
You going to put hours in that or not?
Yeah, I think we should do them all, so the hours of operation that we use, you know, Monday through Friday, Saturday, and the work on Sundays or holidays.
Reasonable.
Seven to seven.
Regius.
All materials and construction vehicles to be kept on site.
Anything else for conditions? All right. All right, so that was motion approved with conditions made by Bob, second by James, all those in favor?
Aye.
Passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, up next, I have application 4-22, Coonan, 134 Siders Pond Road in Falmouth, requesting a special permit to construct in addition a dormer to the second floor of the non-conforming single-family dwelling.
So, application 4-22, David Allen and Mandy Z. Coonan, 42 York Road, Wayland, Mass. applied to the zoning board of appeals for a special permit pursuant to sections 240-10.2A of the Code of Falmouth to construct in addition a dormer to the second floor of the non-conforming single-family dwelling on subject property known as 134 Siders Pond Road, Falmouth. Conservation Commission held a hearing on a notice of intent that was closed on December 8th, an order of condition was voted upon, it was issued on February 8th. We do have in the file the order of condition that was issued, dated February 8th. From engineering, application was reviewed for impacts to public rights of way and public utilities, Siders Pond Road is a public right of way in this area, no alterations are proposed to the right of way, any changes within the right of way would require filing a permit with the engineering division, any connections or alterations to public utilities would require a commission from the, permission from the appropriate town department, the project does not direct any stormwater runoff to public property abudders or public rights of way, dry wells are proposed as recommended, where the project falls in the jurisdiction of ConCon, we defer to the commission for stormwater management, erosion, construction over erosion controls, fire department has no issues with the project as drawn. From assessors, Lot A on Plan 53-89 from 1936, planning, no comment. Water department, the water main and service must be on the final plans to avoid any conflicts with existing or proposed utilities, septic systems, construction, mobilization areas, the existing home is a water fed from a six-inch main in Siders Road. The Falmouth Water Department tie card is attached to assist with the completion of the final plans. Don't use our card because it's overly sized and it doesn't say anything, so. And that's all we have, let's see if there's. Yep, and no other letters, but abudders for against or concerns.
Thank you, Bob, and jury will be voting on this one. Attorney Clower?
Good evening again, for the record Kevin Clower, and I am now representing David and Mandy Coonan, the owners of 134 Siders Pond Road. I'm joined tonight by Chris Harris from Salt Architecture, he is the architect on this project. The owners are seeking to alter the existing non-conforming dwelling with a modest addition in deck. This property is located on the northern shore of Siders Pond, the lot is 9,800 square feet, it's in a general residence zoning district, and dwelling both as existing and as proposed is not in the flood zone. Currently, there is a two-story, three-bedroom dwelling and shed, total footprint of just under 1,400 square feet, the lot coverage by structure existing is 14.1 percent, it is non-conforming to the side yard setback being 7.7 feet where 10 is required, and there was also a shed located in the front yard. Otherwise, this project complies with front and rear yard setbacks and lot coverage requirements. The applicants have owned this property for the past, pardon me, six years, and have had some time to figure out what works and what doesn't. They're seeking an addition to modify this, which while probably not that grand of an addition, will greatly enhance the usability and function of the home. Included in this is a dormer on the existing second story of the building on the eastern side of the home, as well as an addition at the rear of about 12 feet, effectively over the existing deck, as well as a new deck extending 13 feet from that addition. The lot coverage by structure will increase, but it will be at 19.1 percent, still below the 20 percent allowed. The rear yard setback to Siders Pond will be 78 feet, which is well in excess of the 50 feet required. The ridge height will remain the same at 22 feet, two and a half inches, and there's no change to the side yard setback. Again, because of the existing non-conformities, it does require a special permit under 240-10.2A4, which, at risk of repeating myself, allows for alterations to pre-existing non-conforming structures, when the board finds that the proposal is not substantially more detrimental. This proposal does not create any new dimensional non-conformities, the existing non-conforming setback is unaffected, otherwise complies with the front yard setback and side yard setbacks and lot coverage requirements, there's no impact on views and vistas, and it is very much in character with the neighborhood. The proposed dwelling is an improvement, it's a better, more effective use of a narrow lot, it will not create any new dimensional non-conformities, it won't affect the existing non-conformity, there's no adverse effects to this proposal, and I believe that we meet the requirements set forth in 240-10.2A4 and 240-12.1E. I may have rushed through some of that, and if I did, I apologize, but I'd be happy to address any questions that the board might have, and I believe that you can and should issue a special permit for this project.
All right, thank you Attorney Clower. Jury, any questions?
No questions.
James?
Revenee is appreciated, looks like a good project.
Scott?
Giddy up.
Bob?
Just for confirmation, so is it just 10.2A, or you're saying, is there a four?
A4.
It's 10 point-
2A, right?
It's, no, it is-
2A4.
2A4.
Let him speak.
10, 240-10.2A4 is, yes, but I have to double check.
I'm only asking because the permit and the other one only say 10.2A, and I know that four is, I know these are new numbers for everyone-
Yeah.
But there is a four on the 11.3A, I didn't think there was one on the 10.2.
I have it here, so.
As long as we have it right, because I'm quoting the same ones in the other ones, and it's-
13 minutes away from me.
No, it is, it is 240-10.2A, there is no four.
Okay, so you just say, that's okay, it's better for me, because that's what's on the other ones, and I would have had to go back.
Thank you for catching up. It's going to take a while.
Yeah, the numbers- Oh, the only question I have, and I don't know if it's for the administrator, so, there's a non-conformity because the shed is in the front yard, so is that something we can actually allow? I don't think we could allow it, or do we just say it's pre-existing?
So, I actually did pull up aerial photographs to show that it's been there for at least 10 years.
We can just make, okay, we can make a statement, okay.
And I'm happy to submit those if you'd like.
If you could, just for the file.
That's not conditionally.
No, it's just that I don't think, I don't think we can give a permit for it in the front yard, we can just confirm it was there.
Just for the record, I'm just beginning, the first photo there is current, and then I used Google Maps, the resolution is not fantastic, but I did my best.
That's okay, we can go to the testimony anyways.
All right, anything else, Bob?
That's it for me.
Scott?
Might be too technical, what's the invasive species removal? When I was out there, I didn't see anything that really kind of met that criteria in my mind, do you know? Too technical for you? Okay, no more questions.
Got to know what you know and-
It's usually something- You're letting off the hook now, now you're going to say it's too tactical, I don't have to answer that.
I've never seen so many stakes in a backyard, but-
Yeah, I don't know, I'd have to, the landscape designer's more tricky, we could, we could ask just for our own edification.
Yeah, okay, interesting. Thank you, no more, no further questions.
Thanks Scott, and nothing from me, so, public comment, any questions, comments, or concerns regarding this project? Seeing none, back to the board.
Motion to close.
Second.
Motion to close made by James, second by Scott, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Passes unanimously, no more testimony may be taken.
Motion approved, conditions?
Second.
All right, motion approved made by Bob, and second by James.
So, 240-10.2A and 240-12.1E, it's not in a flood zone, it is near the waters of Siders Pond, it would be 78 feet, which is well above the 50 required.
19.1 per-
Yeah, so the current lot coverage by structure is 14.1, and that's going to 19.1, which is still under the 20 percent allowed.
22.2 and a half ridge height?
Yeah, the, for the non-conformities, it's the southwest side yard, which is 7.7 where 10 is required, and the northeast side yard where it's nine and 10 is required. There is a shed that is located in the front yard, applicant supplied aerial photos showing that the shed has been there for more than 10 years, would have protection to stay.
Not much more to it.
No.
Conditions?
Per plans, ConCon order of conditions, the comments from the water department. So, specifically with the water department, the water main and service must be on the final plans to avoid any conflicts with existing or proposed utilities, septic systems, and construction mobilization areas, and that they need to look at the Falmouth Water Department tie card to assist in any completion of the final plans.
All right, anything else?
You didn't even need to put work, I mean-
Yeah, no, I'd put it there because it's in a weird spot and a dead end, so put the same work, I was, I might as well just keep the same with everyone.
All right.
Also put in the finding regarding the lot that it's on Plan 53/89 from 1936. I don't think there was anything else from engineering. Put on there that the, from engineer that they had dry wells as required for roof-
Okay. Ask Clower for anything else?
Same thing about the construction materials and vehicles to be kept on site.
Okay. All right, so if that does it, that was a motion to approve with conditions made by Bob and second by James, all those in favor?
Aye.
Passes unanimously.
You got five more?
One more.
All right.
One more.
Only seems like five more.
Well, you're on a roll so far.
All right, just, yeah, in the cleanup position now.
Each client gets billed five hours.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Wouldn't that be?
All right, up next, we have application 6-22, Chaddy, trustees for 48 Sunset Point Road in North Falmouth, requesting a special permit to construct additions to the first floor and construct a partial second floor addition, increasing lot coverage by structures.
Application 6-22, Thomas J. and Janet C. Chaddy, trustees, 48 Sunset Point Road, North Falmouth, Mass. has applied to the zoning board of appeals for special permits pursuant to sections 240-10.2A and 240-11.3A4 of the Code of Falmouth to construct additions to the first floor and construct a partial second floor addition, increasing lot coverage by structures on subject property known as 48 Sunset Point Road, North Falmouth. From engineering, application was reviewed for impacts to public rights of way and public utilities, Sunset Point Road and Westwood Road are private rights of way in this area, any connections or alterations to public utilities would require permission from the appropriate town department, project does not direct any stormwater runoff to public property abudders or public rights of way, dry wells are shown for roof runoff as recommended, erosion controls are shown to protect the abutting properties as recommended, construction for this project shall follow the town soil erosion and sediment control standard conditions. Found on the Engineering Division's page of the town website, any reference to Department of Public Works Engineering Division shall be replaced with the zoning board of appeals. Who is the permitting authority for this project? Conservation staff has no comments on the above referenced, it is located outside of jurisdiction, fire department has no issues with plans as drawn. From Kahala Water, the water main and service are on the plans as required, the existing home is, has town water from a one-inch service fed from a six-inch main in the road, existing home has the water meter inside the home as required, the Falmouth Water Department does ask that existing valve covers, as shown on the plans, are protected during construction from vehicles, stockpiles, and excavations. From Health, one existing bedroom is being made into an office with a cased opening to accommodate the new third bedroom above the garage, the three-bedroom house is remaining three bedrooms, the pier foundation for the bathroom has adequate separation to the existing septic tank, so Health has no issues with the project as drawn. And there is a letter in support, and this is from Mary Ann Hyatt at 38 Sunset Point Road, North Falmouth, writing to briefly express my full support of the proposed renovations to the home at 48 Sunset Point Road that the zoning board of appeals is considering. We've known Janet and Tom for many years and have reviewed the proposed plans, we believe it is attractive and appropriate design that fits very well in the neighborhood. In addition, I'm aware of the minor encroachment of their driveway onto my property at 38 Sunset Point Road, driveway has been in that location for many years, and we have no objection to it remaining in its current shape and condition. I'm in full support of the application and ask that the zoning board vote in favor of it. There's also a lot comparison worksheet that has been provided.
All right, if that does it, Scott's going to be a voting member on this one. Attorney Clower?
For the fifth and final time tonight, my name is Kevin Clower, I am here tonight representing Janet and Thomas Chaddy, the owners of 48 Sunset Point Road. They are seeking permission to alter the existing non-conforming dwelling on this property. This particular property is located in Wild Harbor Estates, the lot is about 11,000 square feet, exactly 11,000 square feet, and it's located in the residential B zoning district, and it's not located in a flood zone. There was a three-bedroom, single-family home with a footprint of just under 2,400 square feet.
There was a three-bedroom, uh, single-family home with a footprint of just under 2,400 square feet. It's 2,389. It is nonconforming to lot cover, lot, lot coverage by structure being 21.72 where 20 is allowed by right and 25 by special permit. However, there is no special permit as exists. Otherwise, it conforms to, uh, setback requirements as well as lot coverage by structures paving and parking. They are proposing to slightly expand the existing garage as well as adding habitable space on the second floor above. To add a bathroom to the, an existing first floor bedroom and also to convert an existing first floor bedroom into an office with a four-foot cased opening. As many others, Miss Chaddy has been working from home the past few years and intends to continue doing so. Uh, the result of this is, there's no increase in the number of bedrooms or remain at three with the elimination of that first floor bedroom. The ridge height will increase. Uh, it's gonna go, the, the, oh, maximum ridge height will be 20 feet. Uh, it is currently 16, um, the existing ridge. But the ridge over the garage will be at 20 feet. The footprint of the structure will be expanded. It'll be at 24%, which is allowable by special permit.
You said 24?
Yes, 24. This proposal does require a special permit under two forty, 10.2A, formerly, uh, two forty-three C, and two forty, 11.3A4, which is formerly two forty, 69E. Again, two forty, 10.2A4 allows for alterations to pre-existing nonconforming structures, provided that they're not substantially more detrimental. The board has given a number of considerations on that, which we've been through a few times tonight. Similarly, two forty, 11.3A4 allows for lot coverage exceeding 20%. Again, looking at size and height of the structure, uh, effective shadow on adjacent properties, impacts on views and vistas, and the effect of nitrogen. Here, we have no new nonconformities being created. Um, though there is an increase in lot coverage by structure, it is actually eliminated as a nonconformity with the issuance of the special permit. Uh, there's no impact to the views and vistas. There should be no change to the effect of shadow. The ridge height increases relatively minor. Uh, there's no effective nitrogen, as the number of beds will remain the same. And we did submit that lot comparison worksheet, showing that the property is very much in character with the surrounding neighborhood. This out, this application, though the changes are, you know, in some ways very minor, um, have a pretty substantial effect on, on the usefulness of the property for the homeowner. There's no new dimensional nonconformities created and we are eliminating an existing nonconformity. I believe this meets the requirements of two forty, 10.2A4, 11.3A, I'm sorry, 10.2A, uh, 11.3A4, and then 12.1E1. Uh, I'd be happy to address any questions that you guys have, and otherwise I will leave you alone for the evening and go home.
All right, thank you, Attorney Flower. More questions? Scott, anything?
Uh, no more color commentary than anything. It's just how I believe in 2022 that, uh, this has an existing septic tank and nothing better, but that's a Florida health, uh, issue, but, uh, other than that, no, no questions.
All right, thank you. Bob?
No question.
Scott?
Oh, sir.
James?
No, thank you.
No question.
Jerry, nothing? Nothing for me either. All right. Public comment, any questions, comments, or concerns? Seeing none, back to the board.
Motion to close.
Second.
Okay, motion closed by Bob, second by James. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, passes unanimously. Hearing is closed. No more testimony may be taken. Everyone at once. Motion?
Motion to approve.
Leave me on pins and needles.
Second.
All right, thank you, Rob, and thank you, Scott. Findings?
All right, uh, two forty, 10.2A, two forty, 11.3A4, and two forty. Uh, that's 12.1E. Uh, current lot coverage is 21.72. It will be increasing to 24%. Uh, it has a nonconformity to the. To the lot coverage by structure, but not lot coverage by structure, parking, and paving. There's an existing first floor bedroom that is being revised to have a four-foot cased opening converted to an office, which will allow the third bedroom. To be added to the addition above the garage. Current ridge height 16 feet, going to 20. There's a letter submitted by the abutter in full support with an acknowledgement that the current dwelling at 48 has an encroachment of the driveway onto 38 and allowing that to exist.
Not in the flood zone?
A lot, uh, comparison worksheet was submitted. It does fall in within the range of the neighborhood.
You did say it's, uh, no increase in bedroom count, right?
Yeah, no increase in bedroom count, so it's three-bedroom, uh, remaining a three-bedroom.
Total lot coverage 21.72?
That's existing.
For water, it's a one-inch service from a six-inch main. I suppose we could put the finding that Scott mentioned that just to acknowledge that it has a septic tank. Health has no issues though, because the house is remaining. A three-bedroom and that there's adequate separation to the existing septic tank, pier foundation.
I don't, I don't understand the reference to the septic tank. Can you explain that to me?
So because they're doing it.
No, no, no. Scott.
Me personally?
Well, no, a lot, well, I'm just, because a lot of times what'll happen is they'll upgrade the SAS and if the septic tank's in good shape.
Yeah.
They'll do that and then just do a new septic field.
True. I, I understand that. I, I guess my fundamental, uh, comment is, is surrounded by, we have a lot of groundwater issues in, in the town and I, I think we should be upgrading wherever we can. And I, again, it's outside of our purview, but.
Yeah.
It's, it's, uh, that was my comment, more structured around that.
I agree with you.
Okay, actually.
Well, yeah.
All right. Any other findings?
Not really.
Conditions?
Uh, well, per plans. Also that, uh. From the water department, existing valve covers, as shown in the plans, must be protected during construction from any vehicles, stockpiles, or excavations. And then from, uh, soil erosion and sediment control standard conditions with the ZVA as the. Uh, in place of the Department of Public Works. I do put on the findings that dry wells are shown on the plan for the roof runoff. Uh, construction hours. Are standard, and that all materials and vehicles be kept on site.
All right, anything else for conditions? All right, so that was a motion to.
I guess I'll leave it. If you want to have something related to if they wanted to add a shed or such, they'd need to come back. Due to their lock.
Yeah, don't we, don't we, I may put that, that, um.
No changes.
No standard, just put in no changes standard. Does that cover it?
Yeah, I guess. I guess the problem just has been with the building department adding sheds.
Okay, so we could put if there, if there was plans to, to, uh, add any additional structures, they would have to come back to the zoning board if it affects lot coverage.
Very good. All right, so that was a motion to approve with conditions made by Bob, second by Scott. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Have a great night.
Get out.
Go home. I went to home.
Chairman.
James, is there a motion?
Yes. Raise a point of word. It is 9:30. You think 30 minutes will be enough? Or should we go longer?
Uh, I'm hopeful we can do it in 30.
Make a motion that we continue the business at the board till 10 PM.
And I'll happily second Mr. Morse's motion as usual.
Motion was made by James, second by Scott. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, we're going to 10. All right, open meeting. I'm just voting the minutes from February 10th, 2022, and February 24th, 2022.
I think we're just doing the 10th.
Just the 10th, right? Okay. All right, everyone had a chance to review the minutes for the 10th?
Yes.
All right, is, is there a motion?
Motion to accept minutes of the 10th.
I'll second. I'll second.
Motion made by Bob, second by Scott. All those in favor?
Aye.
And we're tabling February 24th. Uh, up next we have requests for insubstantial change, modification to previously approved plans, comprehensive permit numbers 90-17, 90-17M, and 63-20. Helms Circle LLC and Kendall, Kendall Lane Falmouth with a vote anticipated.
Just pass them down.
While we're passing that down, I'd like to make a public disclosure. I had, uh, lunch with a bunch of people yesterday. One of the, was a neighbor that mentioned, uh. She didn't like the project. Told her that I couldn't comment on it one way or the other, and there was no other discussion. That was the 40B project in general. And I did file it with the town manager and the board.
Thank you, jury. Attorney Moynihan, with that disclosure, is there any, any objection?
No, no, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Thank you. All right, so we have before us the insubstantial change request.
Say, do you just want to go through it or? Might as well. So what they're looking for, um. I'll just read it in so if anyone's looking, they know what it is. So this regarding the Helms Circle LLC, which is Little Pond Village at Falmouth Heights, which is now Kendall Lane.
I thought this was the entire substantial.
It's a request for a modification of comprehensive permit in case number 90-17, as modified by modification decision dated February 26, 2020, and case number 90-17M is further modified by modification decision. Dated February 23rd, 2021, and case number 63-20. Collectively, it's the comprehensive permit. This is a notice of project change for insubstantial change request. Regarding a client which is Helms Circle LLC. Building permits have been issued for houses on lots four, five, six, seven, eight, and nine. The houses are all approved by the zoning board as the base design, as the base Cape Design Homes. Lot four, five, six, seven, eight, and nine are all located on the north side of Kendall Lane. These are the lots with the site slopes the greatest amount from the front to the back of the lots. Due to the grade condition, my client is proposing stepped foundations. That extend to the wood framing and related wood siding on the rear and left side elevations of these houses down to a lower grade. This will allow for elimination of large sections of exposed concrete foundation walls. It also allows for modest reworking of the basement windows in these houses. To allow increased natural light into the basements without increasing the number of basement windows. Since the grading varies for each lot, the details of the foundation changes for the referenced lots is as follows. Lot six, seven, and eight, these lots have the greatest change in grade resulting in stepping the foundations three, three, three feet, six inches, plus or minus across the rear elevation. Into eight-foot sections of three foot six and one foot nine respectively along the left side elevation. Closest to the rear corner of the house, there are no changes planned to the right side elevation behind the garage. Lots four and five, which are the, uh, lot four, five, and nine, those are the affordable units. These lots have a lesser change in grade resulting in stepping the foundations two feet across the rear elevation and eight-foot section of two feet along the left side elevation. Closest to the rear corner of the house. There are no changes planned to the right side elevation behind the garage. And then basement windows for each of the six lots, the proposal is to eliminate one window along the left side elevation. Enlarging one of the windows along the left side elevation and adding a larger window along the rear elevation. Uh, and then there was an attachment here that we have that shows the elevation, um, which illustrate the plans being submitted here with, which is the base Cape Home Designs, lot four, five, and nine, Helms Circle Falmouth, Mass. Sheet S1 dated 7/1/21 revised 2/28/22. Prepared by, prepared by designs by SPB Residential Commercial Design and Consulting, Pecasset, Mass. In base Cape Home Design Lot six, seven, and eight, Helms Circle Falmouth, Mass. Sheet S1 dated 7/1/21 revised 2/28/22. Prepared by designs by SPB Residential Commercial Design and Consulting in Pecasset. The applicant believes that these minor modifications to the foundations will enhance the aesthetics of these houses dramatically. This notice of project change is provided pursuant to the provisions of 760 CMR 56.0511A, and the applicant is requesting that the board determine that the proposed change is insubstantial. In accordance with 760 CMR 56.0511A and B, and 760 CMR 56.074. Pursuant to such regulations, the board is to make a determination within 20 calendar days and notify the applicant whether it deems the change insubstantial. If the change is determined to be insubstantial, or if the board fails to notify the applicant within the 20 calendar days, otherwise, the comprehensive permit shall be deemed modified to incorporate the change. This process, uh, does not require a public hearing. A public hearing is only required if the board determines the change is substantial. And then a public hearing must be held within 30 calendar days for a timely determination that the change is substantial. Regulations in 760 CMR 56.074 provide guidelines indicating that requested modifications are generally considered insubstantial. If they do not change the type of housing tenure, in this case, the project will still be homeownership. And if they don't increase the building height by more than 10% or increase or decrease the number of units by more than 10% reduction in size. The site by more than 10% of the decrease in house units proposed. The applicant. Is not proposing any such change. Further, the applicant believes that these minor changes have no adverse impact or in fact beneficial as stated above. The applicant is requesting therefore that the board determine that the change. Described above is insubstantial change. It is minor change that in nature inappropriate for administrative review and approval without a public hearing being required.
All right, so there we have it.
So we're allowed to ask questions, right?
I suppose so.
I had one question for the, since this is not a hearing. Who are the voting members of the entire board voting?
It's, um, so.
I, I, when I read the procedures, it was kind of vague. I think it's the entire board, because it's not a hearing.
Uh, I think.
But there will be a vote.
It's a 40B.
There will be a vote, though. Uh.
So you.
Question whether hearing or not hearing, even though there's a vote. Just asking for clarification.
I don't think it would be every member. I think it'd be the regular voting members and.
Okay, that's fine, just.
Yeah.
Uh, so my question, um, I just had a question on the elevation that was sent in, and it's just more for clarification. And I didn't drive into the project, but I saw it coming from the Elmer roadside, so whatever that entrance is, I assume is one of these specific houses. It's not one of these houses?
The north side, yeah, I was, the north side is on the, the side away from Elmer Road.
So is the Elmer Road, is the Elmer roadside also?
Yeah, if, if you don't mind speaking at the podium, sorry.
It's okay. We'll, we'll be a little more formal. Um, for the record, I'm Laura Moynihan, and I'm a Falmouth attorney representing the applicant. Uh, Mr. Brian Keller here is here as well, who's the manager of Helms Circle LLC. He's the principal of the developer. So the house that you're referring to is on the, what we would call on the south side of Kendall Lane.
The south side versus the north side. So, so are you, are you, um, anticipating that on that south side, they'll also need similar changes because of grade difference?
Do you want to come up? And Brian can answer that, so.
So the request is just for these six lots. We're not requesting, we're not, we, we are not looking for any changes on any other of the 28 lots, just these six. And the only reason we're asking is because these are the six lots that the site slopes off from front to back. And we have a significant amount of exposed concrete in the back. We'd just like, from an aesthetic perspective, to bring the wood down and just make it look nicer. That's, uh.
So visually, it is a better go. The only reason I asked about the other house, whatever number it is, is it appeared when you're going in that that one had two sets of sliders at the back and it seemed so high.
I know.
That you'd need some kind of steps or another deck or something there, and I didn't know how that was gonna be. Rectified to get in and out.
The grades have to come up there. Right now you're seeing the rough grade, the finished grades.
I mean, it seems like it's probably gonna, I mean, if I had a guess, just estimate, it looks like it's gonna have to come up a good three-plus feet.
Well, I, you know, we kind of look at it from finished grade, from the, from the, from where you come out of the house to finished grade, and I'm not really worried about it right now, just because I know what my spread is.
No, I was bringing it up only because looking at it, if I was gonna come out there and I even had a landing, even if I had a grade change.
Yeah.
I, I don't know physically how you could get for the, down to the grade change without something.
Yeah, there's gonna have to be something there, but.
If, if, if that's something you think might have to happen, you may consider whatever the next to bring in some kind of.
Yeah, I mean, if there are any, this is, as it relates to the step foundation, these are the only lots that we have this requirement on. We may come back for some other things, but, you know, but right now this is all we're dealing with. And we just think it's a, uh, it'll make the houses look a lot nicer, you know?
So, so it's a traditional knee wall is what you're doing?
Exactly.
Okay. Um, man? With respect to, uh, the volume of material that you're going to add or save on this, does that affect your budget at all?
Does it affect my budget?
Yeah, are you using more or less, uh, material that you budgeted for this by doing this change?
I'm using a little less concrete and a little more wood.
So, but it won't affect, it won't affect capturing the water on the backside of these, these, uh, houses, right?
It won't, no, it won't.
Because I know, yeah, we had a little water problem there at one point, right?
Well, can I, can I, uh, I don't, I don't want to actually replay history here, but the water problem that we had there, I'm happy to clarify that. But there is, this site does not have a water issue. In fact, water is down almost 20 feet. It's unbelievably. In fact, water is down almost 20 feet, it's unbelievably sandy soils. The water issue we had there is we were doing a connection point into Worcester Court, and we inadvertently hit a water main that was not, we went through the dig safe process and it wasn't marked out, and so when we hit the water main, we directed the water onto our site to keep it off the town road and abutting properties, and it ran for a night, and that's the only time, other than the rainstorm, that we've had water on our site. And we had a lot of water on our site because we directed the water onto our site. We do not have a, I just want to go on record, we do not have a water problem on the site. I appreciate...
So, so your testimony is that the changes that are being proposed will not redirect water that was on the originally, the original, the original plan?
Correct. There's no... Great changes on... Zero, zero impact on anything other than aesthetics.
Okay. Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right, thank you, and thank you for the clarification.
Yep.
All right, any other questions?
No.
No. All right. Sounds like the board's satisfied?
Yeah, so I, I, I would actually make a motion to prove it's not affecting anything else, it's not affecting lot coverage, it's more visual.
I'd second it.
All right, so a motion...
We need to make a finding that it's insubstantial and then...
Yeah, so first, so first I make a motion that, that the requested changes are insubstantial in nature.
Okay.
All right, so a motion was made by Bob, and I'll give that one to James, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And I'd make a motion that we approve the insubstantial changes as requested.
Second.
All right, motion was made by Bob, second by James, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all right.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. May I make a request on this? The foundation pouring has been put on hold for a couple of weeks because of this process, and the building commissioner is waiting for Noreen to sign off on the foundation change, so I'm wondering if you could authorize Ms. Stockman to sign off on that tomorrow, even if you don't have a written decision yet, because the contractor's ready to pour on Monday, and they really need to maintain that schedule. So it would just be a matter of her knowing she would be authorized to sign off on the building permit.
You said one thing on that.
You have to come to the podium.
It's a very, as, as you probably know, it's, it's a very hectic market there, and when we lose contractors for a day, we don't lose them for a day. They leave the site, and we may lose them for two or three weeks. We did make this request a few weeks ago, and we understand we had to come tonight, which is no problem at all, you know, we get it. And so we did lose our contractor, and so when we lose people, sometimes it's a couple of weeks. We would like to try to get the foundations in on Monday if possible, just that we're trying to get some people in before the summer if we can. And, and, once again, it's just hard scheduling people, when you lose them, you just don't lose them for a day. We've got somebody teed up for Monday, they're ready to go, they've done all our other foundation work there, they're a great sub, and if somehow we could get those poured for Monday, we did meet with the building commissioner this morning, he is on board with this request, he's, you know, ready to approve it, subject to...
Why wasn't that request asked with the, the insubstantial changes, why, after the vote was taken, it's the ask?
Pardon me?
We've already voted on the insubstantial changes, correct?
Yeah.
And then this is more of a substantial ask than...
Well, well, no, it, it's just, it, it, Noreen would...
No, it's an ask, it's a separate...
Noreen would, is required by the building commissioner to sign the amendment to the foundation permit, that's all, because it's a 40B. So I just didn't want there to be any misunderstanding on Noreen's part that she couldn't do that before she actually filed a written decision, because the written decision could be another week or so. So that's, that's the only reason I'm asking for that request.
What is that, normal procedures with regard to this?
So, we do typically write something up, and then we can certainly sign off on the building permit. The only issue for me is I'm actually out of the office tomorrow, I can send Gary an email.
Okay.
But, I don't, I don't know that I'm gonna...
Then Gary's only here on what, on Fridays?
Yeah, and I apologize, Mr. Zansky, I didn't mean to complicate it, I just didn't want, because of the timing, I didn't want there to be any misunderstanding on Noreen or Gary's part that since the board had voted the approval, that he could go ahead and, and authorize that foundation pouring.
I didn't take it that way, but...
So, yeah.
You know, you know we're striving for more specificity...
I know, yeah.
To streamline things and get them all on the record, so that's my, the reason I inquired.
Well, I guess we could just request that it be done as soon as possible, because I don't know logistically if you would physically be able to do it tomorrow.
But this will certainly not set a precedent for the rest of them, correct?
Yeah. No, no.
Just for favor.
It, it's just to not have to wait for the filing of a written decision, because so the permit can issue, that's all.
Firstly, I get that aspect of it, but I just don't want it to become, well, you did it before.
All right.
Well, well, I just want to get that on the record, that you said that, that's all. Thank you.
Yeah.
Just acknowledge that the administrator will, will try to do it as soon as possible.
Okay.
We might appreciate it.
Yeah, thanks very much, yeah.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
All right, up next, we have a request for an insubstantial change, modification to previously approved plans, comprehensive permit 50-20, Village at Brick Hill LLC, 511 Brick Hill Road in West Falmouth, with a vote anticipated.
Right, so on this one, continue. So I think everybody received the actual request for insubstantial changes that was sent over, it was a letter that came in March 1st, it was certified to the board office, and it lists all the changes that they're looking for. Wednesday, March 9th, I received by the office from Adam J. Costa from Me Talaman Costa LLC, Green Street, Newburyport. He writes, "My client was out of the country, hence my late response to requests for confirmation," and this is, Ashley in the office asked for confirmation because there was some mention that they may want a continuation. I guess originally, they, it might have been a phone call, they said they were requesting a continuation for the board's March 10th meeting, but nothing was received, so he sent this in. And again, it says, "My client was out of the country, hence my late response to your request for confirmation. I apologize, I did receive your email below advising of the upcoming agenda. Unfortunately, I am unavailable tomorrow night. I had hoped to attend particularly to address any questions the board members might have about your, our request. My client would attend himself except that he has the flu. I would like to respectfully request that the 511 Brick Hill Road matter be rescheduled for the board's March 24th meeting if the board would afford me that courtesy. I know that we have the, the situation with these insubstantial requests, that once they file in the office, we have to make a ruling on them within 20 days. I think, I think Noreen has talked to town council and said that if we did approve this request, even though it goes beyond 20 days, it would be okay as long as the applicant had signed an extension allowing to go beyond the 20-day period as required by the statute."
And we do have a signed extension in front of me from the applicant.
So that's the main thing. What does it say?
Going beyond 20 days. Hearing to be held March 24th, 2022.
Okay, so then we just make note that we have a sign by the applicant that allows the continuation no later than March 24th?
And that's just for the vote of whether it's substantial or insubstantial, right?
That's all it is.
That's all it is.
And if at the time that the vote, we, the votes, insubstantial, substantial, if at time the vote goes substantial, at that point, we have 30 days in which to open a public hearing by the statute. So if that happens, just keep in mind the date timelines.
Good.
So I would make a motion to, to approve the confirmation, the continuation request to March 24th, again noting that we have a signed extension by the applicant that allows us to continue to March 24th, which is beyond the original 20 days allowed by statute.
All right, so a motion was made by Bob, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Scott Peterson, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. This is an honestly, and I'm signing it now.
Can Scott second that, see on the original, oh, those are just...
We got somewhere important. All right, up next, assignment to bylaw recertification working group.
I messed up.
Not you.
And it's actually my fault, because I didn't understand. I've been on the bylaw working group for the last six years, and I hadn't planned on not being on it, but I thought that they needed to be, I wasn't sure if they needed to be assignment of a second member or not. So when I attended, when I eventually attended the working group meeting, there was, with me, it meant there were three members in attendance from the zoning board repeals. These working groups are very specific as how many members you can have for each board, and the planning member has two, planning board has two members, so there was a concern that the zoning board with three members there was...
Trying to stack the stacks.
Yeah. Yeah, was, I, and not that, and it really wasn't anything to wait around, but I think it could be a territorial issue, I have no idea, but I would like to remain on the, on the group, and I had comments to add to the group, but I just needed to correct it somehow so I can actually submit my comments to the chairman, and I did talk to the chairman of the planning board about this to explain what the confusion was.
All right.
Does that mean the chairman has to fire somebody?
Yes.
Want to put it that way.
Scott, do you want to continue, I can step down if you want to continue.
I wouldn't mind, just, it's, it's a good education for me, but it's, you know, it's...
Jerry, thank you.
That's very gentlemanly.
Thank you for making it easy on me, I don't need to fire anyone.
Yeah, I appreciate it too, I thank you for...
Rock paper scissors.
Apologies to everyone for, for that little mess up that I had, was, was that two weeks ago?
Well, and remember in the future, when there's a working group, they are very specific. Actually, it did.
Why you never volunteer for anything, learn that in the military.
All right, up next, board updates, anything?
I turned my papers in today.
Congratulations.
I don't know if that's what up to... I'm telling you.
It's a personal...
Duh. Oh, it's a pro, okay.
Could have affected the board.
All right, board discussion, anything?
Oh, um... I don't know if I can discuss, so Noreen, if, if something was mentioned earlier, and it was regarding a project, but something that wasn't asked for, and I know that something will need to be asked for, can we discuss it here at all, or no?
I have no idea what you're saying.
That's pretty correct.
Well, you can't, you can't speak in hypotheticals.
So I mentioned something on a last project...
Right, yeah.
And an answer from an applicant was, yes, they expect they'll have to do something about it, so...
Oh, that someone will be back?
So my only comment is on if, if, if a project is out there and we are aware there are changes that have been made, that we know are not part of our permitting, and we know there will have to be some kind of a revision, maybe you could reach out to them in advance and ask them what the status is.
Excuse me.
It's going to have to be handled very delicately, though.
If that should occur, I just, you know, you get an answer at a meeting and they, they're aware of something that's going to be changed, and it's there, but no one's putting in a request, I just...
Well, they hadn't thought about what the change was going to be, in all fairness, I'm not, hey, I know what you're saying, he's saying, we don't know what the change is going to be.
No, this is something, but this is something that there's already been a change that doesn't exist on the plans that we have.
Oh, okay, that's different.
Yeah.
Okay. Something maybe did coming down the pike.
Something to keep an eye on.
Yep.
Also, with, with, with dates and rescheduling hearings, just going on the future, it's something the board may want to think about, that, you know, I'm sure there'll be more 40Bs in the future and everything else, and the, the scheduling is very tight, especially when we are doing a lot of continuances lately. So just keep, you know, all the members should keep an eye on the dates, that if they feel in advance that some of these dates are filling up too quick, you, we may want to consider another hearing in between on one of the, you know, vacant weeks that we have. It may also cut down our hearing time. I know that originally we used to do hearings pretty consistently, except a couple of weeks in the summer and Christmas and holidays. The one plus we had at that time, even though we had a full docket, is that we usually get out of here by nine o'clock. So it just might be something that you want to consider in the future.
And, and Mr. Chairman, he, that's a very good point. We have learned firsthand that when there are special circumstances and, and non-voting members are appointed, we learned that, that can be, there can be ramifications for that.
Right.
But if, in the event that someone is, is leaving the board, I think it's, it's due diligence that they're not be appointed to what we know is going to be a longer hearing process with, with that timeline, and at least till you know what that timeline is. I think it was, it's, it's responsible to the public, it's responsible to the other members that may be assigned to that case. So I think that we should have some kind of, I, I don't know how we'd write it, or some kind of policy, but it should give the chairman some kind of latitude to be able to make that decision without getting sued over it.
Well, he, you could always say you're not going to be, you may not be available.
But, but it depends, Jerry, on who the applicant is and what their inference is. If I was to recuse myself without having to explain everything to it, it still opens us up for that eventuality.
So what, um...
I'm just trying to keep it clean.
And I think...
You could say you're not prepared, and that's clean. But I'm always prepared, Jerry.
Well, somewhat, so from what we've been, we've referred from a remand, a remand order would be given by the state.
I think this works around.
Right.
A remand, it's our understanding that mem, full members must always be seated if available.
Yep.
We don't really have a choice in that, since we've started getting remand orders in that have said that to us, so I guess...
Noreen, do, can we get some clarification from town council on that?
I think, I think the plus could be that if, as long as the associates are available, then if a vacancy occurs, is, and they've been on, they've, they've been there for the hearings, and if there's a chance they only miss one, even they're on it, can you do a Mullen rule if you're not on it, once you miss one?
So, yes, so as long as, so we'll just pick like Mr. Peterson and say he wasn't assigned as a voting member, but if he was present for all the hearings...
And somebody had to come off.
Then someone was not there or not able to vote, he would be eligible to be moved into the voting role because he is...
Well, that, that cleans it up right there.
Yeah, because I, I don't really think the Mullen rule kicks in, I think that's just, that's just why we have alternates.
All right, all right, I just, I just...
And I mean, years ago, I had a board member who was retiring, and his concern at the time was that if a 40B was filed, he knew that would exceed the timeline that he was going to be on the board. So he just requested from me that he not be assigned to any cases that would be a longer term.
Yep.
But we can deal with it as it comes.
All right.
All right.
Anything else for board discussion? Future agenda items? All right, our next hearing is March 24th here at Town Hall, meeting adjourned.